Okay, how about now?
Speaking of the microphone.
Okay, so, welcome. Good evening. It's great to see everyone. Uh, we are here for our regularly scheduled December City Council meeting. If you all would mind standing and joining me for the political allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you very much. All we see please. Madam Clerk, if you call the rule, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Here.
Mayor Boulay.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Chimplin.
Present.
Counselor Finacy.
Present.
Counselor Grady Sexton. Counselor Keesh.
Here.
Counselor Klevick.
Here.
Counselor Mattson.
Here.
Counselor McGloslin.
Here.
Counselor McNamara.
Here.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Counselor Pierce.
Here.
Counselor Vice Hocken.
Here.
And Counselor Todd.
Here. Good to see everyone. At this time, I will recognize Mayor-elect, Jim.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I'd like to read a resolution. The State of New Hampshire by His Excellency Christopher T. Sanunu, Governor, a commendation in the year of our Lord 2023 to James Boulay, Mayor of the City of Concord. Whereas Mayor James Boulay, a proud son of the capital city of Concord, is ending his service to the city as its fifty-sixth mayor after twenty-six years in elected office, and it is fitting and appropriate for the state of New Hampshire and its citizens to recognize such a remarkable record of community service. And whereas during his tenure as city council for a decade and his service as the longest-serving mayor in the history of the city of Concord, Jim served with two city managers, five police chiefs, two directors of general services, three tax assessors, two finance directors, three human services directors, three city clerks, two human resources directors, two city solicitors, and three information technology directors. No gold rings. A position that didn't exist when Jim began his service. And whereas during Jim's twenty-six years with the city, he has served with over fifty-two different members of the city council and has always found ways to work productively with all his colleagues to advance the best interests of Concord and its residents and businesses. And whereas while in office, Jim attended more than five hundred and seventy-four city council and finance committee meetings, and by the official estimate of the city of Concord, attended approximately three thousand one hundred and twenty other committee meetings, spending over ten full years of his life in hours on those meetings alone.
I never could be that smart.
And whereas this tally does not include any of the hundreds of meetings with city staff, women coven ceremonies, meetings held with state officials and businesses in the capital city. And whereas during his tenure as mayor, the city of Concord prospered and progressed as a city through a number of initiatives and accomplishments led by Jim and City Hall, including the redevelopment and revitalization of Main Street and the downtown core, the creation of humorous arts and performing venues, the redevelopment of the Pentagon area of the city, the improvement of the Heights area of the city, the improvement of the library and the refurbishment of city recreational facilities, the construction of a community center, the growth of the tax base through the redevelopment of Horshew Pond and other commerce hubs in Concord, the maintenance of strong relations with the state government and its various agencies headquartered in the city, the creation and support for housing opportunities for the most vulnerable citizens, and his leadership in making Concord the most welcoming and supportive community in New Hampshire for new Americans. Now therefore I, Christopher T. Sanunu, Governor of the State of New Hampshire, do hereby commend Mayor James Boulay for his many years of valued service to the city of Concord and the Granite State, applaud him for all that he has done to support our citizens with his leadership, and wish him all the best in the years to come. In testimony thereof, I have here on to set my hand and call the seal of the state of New Hampshire to be affixed this eleventh day of December 2023. Christopher T. Sanunu, Governor. I would also like to add, although it wasn't the resolution, that one of the significant byproducts of the downtown project was to take that section of Main Street, which was rebuilt, accessible to citizens of all physical abilities.
All right, so I'm gonna tell you the other half of the story. You ready? So, uh, so, so the clerk called and said, hey, let's figure this out. Like, how much time did you actually spend in this room? And so we started going through, counting such. And then we got the idea like, well, how much have you been paid over the past twenty-six years? So we figured that out. So we figured out that my hourly rate is eighteen cents an hour. For taxes. And as I'm gonna say it before he says it back there, you get your pay for it. Okay, thank you very much. So we do have the minutes of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three before us. Is there a motion? Madam May, second to approve the minutes of November thirteenth. Any changes? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Yes, the motion is adopted. Tonight, we have before us a resolution proclaiming December twenty twenty-three as Capital Region Food Program Month. If you want to come up and join us. I'm gonna start, I'm gonna read this if you don't mind, and then you talk a little bit. So this is Resolution ninety-five ninety-two proclaiming December twenty twenty-three as Capital Region Food Program Month. Whereas the Capital Region Food Program is a all-volunteer nonprofit organization established in nineteen seventy-four because of the grave problem of hunger in the greater Concord area. And whereas the Capital Region Food Program marks its fiftieth consecutive year in providing food for the hungry through its holiday project. And whereas refinements in the project are a undertaking, originally in nineteen seventy-four, the baskets provided enough food for Christmas holiday alone involved in providing food for the holiday meals, plus up to three weeks additional meals. With the changing landscape, the Capital Region Food Program made another refinement, launching its holiday voucher pilot project in twenty twenty-two. Recipients were able to select the food items most appropriate for their family, being mindful of their needs, including, but not limited to, food sensitivities, gluten-free, low-sodium, low-fat, vegetarian, vegan, and other dietary restrictions. And whereas, the program has expanded its operations to include year-round distribution to the area food pantries and soup kitchens, supporting their great work, which is accomplished by purchasing and distributing at no cost to participating agencies, enough food to provide over five thousand nine hundred meals per month, per month. Whereas COVID-nineteen caused the Capital Region Food Program to re-engineer its holiday food basket project as evolution to the new holiday project. The Capital Region Food Program has continuously adhered to the line of its values, which include collaboration, cooperation, responsibility, mindfulness, safety, and community considerations. In keeping with these values, the twenty twenty-three holiday project continues to take proactive steps to maximize safety, helping those in need, while still accomplishing its mission of assisting individuals and families in need. And whereas the impact of all these volunteer organizations and all volunteer organizations on the land, community-wide effort has resulted in over three thousand six hundred tons of food having been distributed to the food insecure in Concord and throughout seventeen communities over the past forty-nine years, with items purchased valued in excess of three point six million dollars. In addition, the Capital Region Food Program has distributed donated food items with a value estimated at one point six seven five million. The combined value of purchased and donated food exceeds five point two seven million dollars. That therefore be resolved, the month of December is designated Capital Region Food Program Month in the city of Concord, and be it further resolved, the community be encouraged to participate, contribute, and support the Capital Region Food Program now and throughout the year. City Council, November thirteenth, asked, I'm myself. So, thank you very much for all you do. I think that the resolution sums up, I want to read it, because I think it's important enough that it is an all-volunteer effort. The fact that you do this year-round is significant to our community, and welcome and thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Eileen Alois, I'm the current Chair of the Board of Trustees for the Capital Region Food Program, and with me is Tim Growth, our Vice Chair. There was quite a bit put in that resolution. Thank you so much for reading that.
Can you pull your closer, it's why we...
Man, I can't pick the right seat. I can't get close enough to the mic. This is why I'm a guest, and not a hero.
Thanks for coming.
So, I'm the current Chair of the Capital Region Food Program, and while there's a lot of information given out in the resolution there, the keynotes to make for you is that based on the success of the changes that we did last year, moving to the voucher model, being so successful, we formally adopted that as our permanent structure for the holiday project moving forward. We are slated to have a twenty-five percent increase in serving families that are food insecure this season, so we will be helping about twenty-two hundred families, deliver seven thousand individuals in Concord and the surrounding seventeen communities. The best part about the information that we learned last year was what a bigger difference we're able to make. We're really proud that this is our fiftieth year of doing this, but we think that now, this year, after so many years of being able to refine, we're on third and fourth generations of participation, that we've been able to evolve even that much further and further meet the needs of those individuals that we are serving. We learned last year that a lot of people are actually using vouchers later, they can use it till the end of January. We saw a lot more use in January because people had other resources available to them on the specific holiday itself. We also found that they are purchasing food items that were not possible to put on a mass scale in our production lines, so we couldn't do fresh and frozen vegetables and fruit, and we couldn't do rotisserie chickens and things like that that just made it easier for people to purchase there. So, we're very happy to be able to continue that work, and we really appreciate all the support that the city has provided us throughout all the years, all of our evolutions, and we're very happy to be here today.
Elena summed it up incredibly well, and I'm incredibly grateful for the continued support of Concord and the city, and just continuing forward on this endeavor that we've embarked on as an organization. Thank you for inviting us here today, and I look forward for the years to come.
So, I just have one. So if I'm watching at home or all these wonderful people in the audience, and I want to help, what's the best way that I can help you in your mission?
At this point, the best way is donations. A hundred percent of every dollar does go to the purchase of food, which is one of the unique things about our organization in addition to being a volunteer organization. Anyone happens to be going into business after hours tomorrow, the few attendance been waived so that people couldn't make a donation because we are honorary for business after hours, but also on our website, www.capitalegionfoodprogram.org, there's the ability to donate right on our page.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you for all the work you do, really appreciate all the volunteers. If you go around with this, some people... So that takes us to our consent agenda this evening. No items have been asked to be removed. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda? Motion made, second to approve the consent agenda? Any... Okay, all ready for the question? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The consent agenda is adopted. It takes us to our public hearings this evening. Item thirty-six A, Madam Clerk.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of sixty-eight thousand dollars for a source development charge study and accepting the sum of sixty-eight thousand dollars in drinking water and groundwater trust fund grant funds.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Members of the City Council, the City Council authorized the General Services Department to apply for, and we have been awarded funds to complete a source development charge study for water sales beyond the Concord borders. The study will establish fees for water used outside of Concord boundaries, who may receive water service to pay for their portion of the source capacity from Concord. The source capacity includes developing additional water source and the necessary treatment facilities to develop it. Establishing a source development charge protects the city of Concord and its water customers from the burden of paying for source expansion that may be driven by consumption outside the city limits while helping neighboring communities correct contaminated water supplies. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the manager? See, we'll open the public hearing on this item, and if we wish to testify. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, mayors, members of the City Council, city manager, city clerk. I'm Roy Schweiker, and I would like to extend this. Supposedly, we're gonna be spending twenty-six million dollars to develop water distribution additionally on the Heights, and I'd like to see that go to the people that hook up to that distribution. I think that the current water users should not be paying to subsidize new water users. If you've got to add stuff for the new water users, they should be paying a hookup fee to pay for it. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Schweiger? Would you come out? Anybody else?
Excuse me, Your Honor, I just wanted to make a, to let you know that I should have recused myself from item consent agenda, item twenty-seven.
Anybody else wish to testify on this thing? Okay, see, now I'm closing the hearing. Go to the round.
I just wanted to say that I wanted to recuse myself from that item. I missed it. It was item number twenty-seven.
Thank you very much. Okay, clerk, item thirty-five B, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of twenty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars for law enforcement-related programs and accepting the sum of twenty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars in unmatched grant funds from the United States Department of Justice.
Members of the City Council, this grant will allow the Concord Police Department to place and update older technologies currently in use and purchase new equipment as needed to maintain our ever-changing efforts in the law enforcement environment. In addition, these funds will be utilized to offset costs associated with providing enhanced training to department personnel in specialized areas. As the priority is, there is no match required for this grant, however. Again, we will enter into memory of understanding with the County of Merrimack on programming and allotment of funds. Under this agreement, the police department will receive nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars for technological upgrades and equipment purchase and training, while the County of Merrimack will receive five thousand dollars. Glad to answer any questions.
Very much. Any questions? See, now we'll open the public hearing on this item, and if we wish to testify. See, closing the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, I'm thirty-five C, please.
Yes, it's a resolution appropriating the sum of twenty thousand two hundred dollars to assist the library's mission in providing a variety of equitable services to patrons at the Concord Public Library and accepting the sum of twenty thousand two hundred dollars in grant funds from the Concord Public Library Foundation.
Members of the Council, the Concord Public Library Foundation awarded this money to support the library and its patrons. This grant will cover such items as the purchase of multicultural artwork, exam passes, library of things, wonder books, e-bike support, and a large and very, very important piece, a new large format scan for preservation. Also giveaways that community events will be included, check covers the period from January one, twenty twenty-four, to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions, Mr. Manager? Anybody wish to testify on this item? I'm closing the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item thirty-five D, please.
It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sales agreement with the Dupree Company or related entity to acquire real estate located at Fort Booton Street and one twenty-four North State Street for the police headquarters project, appropriating the sum of four million ninety thousand dollars for the acquisition and purchase of real estate located at Fort Booton Street and one twenty-four North State Street, and authorizing the issuance in bonds and notes in the sum of four million ninety thousand dollars for this purpose.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Members of the Council, ask Mr. Walsh, Deputy City Manager of Development, to come forward and present.
Good evening, Mr. Walsh. Good evening, Your Honor, members of the Council. You have the end before you get read by the clerk, just some background. So, the premises were formerly owned by the Concord Group Insurance Company. The Concord Group relocated operations to southern New Hampshire earlier this year. Early last summer, the Concord Group offered the property to the Dupree Company for originally three point six million, the price was negotiated down to three point five, in exchange for some inducement to terminate lease agreements that it had with the Dupree Company for other properties in Concord that it occupied. The Dupree Company signed a purchase and sale agreement for the premises in early September. Originally, our intention, when we started conversations, was to try and arrange a deal whereby Dupree Companies would sign a purchase and sale agreement, and that agreement would have been assigned to the city. Following our due diligence, we would have then approved favorable, gone forward with closing the transaction. However, the approach was not viable because the Concord Group was not willing to hold out for the amount of time that the city needed to complete our diligence, which is about six months. As such, and subject to tense outcome, the Dupree Companies plan to acquire the premises by the end of this calendar year, December thirty-first, and hold the property for up to six months so the city may complete its due diligence to determine if the property is suitable for a new police headquarters. Some quick information about the premises, it's two separate lots combined, they have about two point one six acres of land, a little over seven hundred feet of frontage on multiple streets, primarily North State Street, Booton Street. Thirty-eight thousand square foot building, gross constructed in nineteen fifty-seven, one hundred and thirteen parking spaces. The property is centrally located, has excellent proximity to I-93, I-393, and Route Three. It has uniquely three driveways and has access to two signalized intersections directly, which is ideal. Certified by all major utilities, there are no wetlands or steep slopes, there are no known environmental... Certified by all major utilities, or no wetlands or steep slopes, or no known environmental issues for soil or groundwater. It's inside the city's urban growth boundary, which is desirable. It's where we target new development to occur. The assessed value of the property is $3,346,000 at both lots combined. I would note that our equalization ratio right now is 79.4%. So when you apply that, it would actually suggest a market value of about $4.2 million. The purchase price is 3.5. Speaking of the purchase price, as noted earlier, Mr. Dupree's negotiated price of $3.5 million, which he's providing to the city. In addition, our purchase price, our acquisition cost will include carrying costs that are incurred by the Dupree Company. We're estimating those are about $451,000. There's a detailed summary of what that estimate is in exhibit B of the purchase and sale agreement, which is page 16 of that agreement. It's important to note that we will only pay those carrying costs that are actual, verifiable, and commercially reasonable. The carrying costs include utilities, buildings and ground maintenance, bank fees and interest payments, and financing that the Dupree Company secured on a short-term basis to finance their acquisition of the property. The $451,000 of carrying costs estimated, approximately $296,000 of that are bank fees and interest costs. So that's what that number probably is made up of. 180-day due diligence period, based on what we think the purchase and sale agreement would be signed if the council wants to move forward tonight. We anticipate a closing on or before June 12th of 2024. The purchase is subject to satisfactory completion of our due diligence. Speaking of due diligence, in June, the City Council appropriated $75,000 as part of the fiscal '24 budget for CIP 643. We're going to use those funds, which were meant for site selection study, and use them for due diligence purposes for this transaction. Due diligence will include title review and make sure the title's clean, marketable, and insurable, phase an environmental site assessment, hazard building materials survey, as well as a space program and schematic design for two specific options for the property. One of those will be adaptive reuse of the existing structure. Staff will return to the City Council to present the results of the due diligence exercises prior to closing. We would anticipate that that return to council would happen sometime in the late winter or early spring. The acquisition budget, as you know, is $4,090,000. There's a detail on page five of the staff report that discusses how those funds will be used. That excludes the $75,000 previously appropriated by the council back in June for diligence. And I won't go through that unless council has questions. Looking ahead, again, we'll return to the council in the late winter, early spring with the result of the due diligence. In the meantime, as we start preparing the fiscal '25 budget, we'll be looking ahead to potential design and construction costs for a new police station, but also funds to study potential renovation of the City Hall campus and adaptive reuse of the police station for governmental purposes. Those are all decisions that the next council will be making. In your packet tonight, there is a full copy of CIP 643 as adopted in the fiscal '24 budget. If you have any questions about what's currently carried as placeholders, emphasis on placeholders in the new police station, that information is there. In summary, staff recommends proceeding forward. This is a new property and an excellent opportunity for the community. Again, subject to our due diligence, the property appears to have the potential to satisfy the police department's unique needs. Those needs are outlined in the 2021 need assessment of the current facility. Relocation affords the city the opportunity to potentially relocate and consolidate the prosecutor's office into the police station. That would be ideal for operations, improve efficiency, but it would also help the city save on rent. We're currently renting the facility at about $41,000 a year. The facility helps the police address its operating concerns and inefficiencies, achieve accreditation as well as strengthen morale, and help with recruitment and retention. The property is being offered by a willing seller. There is no eminent domain that's required. And again, if the police headquarters is ultimately relocated from the campus, the former police station would potentially allow the city some flexibility in how we address other departmental needs here at the campus. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Mr. Walsh? Go to the great assistant.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Could you, you mentioned that this might give us an opportunity to consolidate with the prosecutor's office, also considering the Human Services Department?
We haven't talked about that explicitly, but it's something we could look at if the council wants us to look at that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One quick one. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Can you tell me, has there been any commercial interest other than the city in this bill that you know of?
Not that I am aware of, and I believe it was more or less a direct deal between the Concord Group and Mr. Dupree's organization.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name was taken. I don't know. I apparently am half there. Mr. Walsh, removing this building from the tax roll, that's going to cost the city a lot of about $29,000 in revenue, tax revenue.
It's actually...
It's actually $3,000 or $3,000, something.
Times approximately $27,000 per thousand, so it's actually more than that. So yes, there is a cost.
I apologize. I meant only the city portion.
My apologies. So the tax rate, the municipal portion of the tax rate is approximately a third of the tax rate, so yes, that would be around that order of magnitude.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Oh, that's fine. Sorry, I was a little bit combered. So when you state that the figure in the CIP is a placeholder, would you define what that means?
It means when the FY '24 capital improvement program was adopted back in June by the council, there are some numbers in fiscal '26 and '27, I believe. And my recollection is that $2.5 million was carried for design of a facility and $25 million was carried for a new facility. Those numbers are placeholders based on what we were, we believe, seeing in the marketplace, based on what we thought the facility would be, but it wasn't tied to a specific location, a specific site, anything like that. So it was an effort to try to let the community know that this was on the horizon, to let the council know from a financial perspective, this is out there so we can plan for it, but it was not tied to a specific site. So therefore, as we start tying ourselves to a specific property, we'll be adjusting those numbers, and given the schematic design and space program that we're going to be doing as part of our diligence, we'll be able to come back to the council with a more realistic budget estimate based on the specific location once we conclude that process.
Super. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Follow-up on Counselor Jepplin's question. The placeholder member that we, that is in the CIP, there's a portion of that, is a portion of that intended to cover acquisition costs? So the CIP as it is today, there's the $75,000 that was appropriated in '24 for site selection study for potentially the headquarters. We had $2.5 million for design. We had $25 million for construction. We did not have any real estate acquisitions part of that number.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
It's time to open the public hearing on this item. Is anyone wishing to testify?
Yo.
You go first.
My name is Napsted. I'm 45.
I apologize, sir. Could you just introduce yourself one more time?
Yes, my name is Tracy Napsted.
Thank you.
I live in 45 here in Concord, and it's great to see all of our council people here tonight and all of our guests here. Although I have to say, I wonder who picked this venue because it's awfully small for the number of people who are here. But I'm glad to see our men in blue, just in case the Trumpers decide that they want to storm the Capitol. So I feel safe. That's good. Great to see Mayor Booley and our mayor-elect, Mr. Jepplin. Byron Jepplin was my student at one time. He was a good student.
You're generous.
Okay, he was a good, very good student. Anyway, about the purchase of the site for the new police station, this turnover here, this flipping, this real estate is a really good deal for Mr. Dupree. A million dollars to hold onto it for a few months and then turn it over to the city, sounds pretty good to me. But I would want to make sure that Concord follows through and makes sure that when they purchase this property, that they get in there and they do a very expensive asbestos evaluation of the site. And then they want to get in there and do a very, very expensive asbestos mitigation of the site. And then they want to get in there and do a very, very, very expensive, tear the roof off the building and put a new roof on the site. And then the very, 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 very expensive decision that they really don't want this thing, they're going to tear it down and they're going to build a new building. Does that sound like anything you know about? Yeah. Okay. So what is the guarantee to the people in Concord that this is going to be a good deal? I don't see it coming. On top of, we're going to build a new bridge across the Merrimack River? We're going to build a roundabout at McKey Square? Where are the long-term projects? The thinking about long-term projects? Are we going to put solar equipment on the top of the new garage at Stickney? I don't think that's in the project there. How about the solar equipment that we installed on top of the Everton Arena? Oh, there was none. Oh, okay. How about the solar equipment we put on top of Dewey School? Oh, we didn't do that either. How about, well, we put a new roof on Concord High School, we put a lot of solar equipment on there to help mitigate the costs of... No, we didn't do that either. How about when we built the bus station? No, we didn't do that either. We didn't... How about we put that new retail space down on Store Street? No, there was no solar equipment down there. Concord taxpayers are expected to just keep coming up with more and more and more money for these terrific projects that you city fathers decide that you're going to come up with. It's... And what about the carbon footprint of these projects going forward? Are we mitigating the impact on our climate? No, we're not doing that. Concord has a very, very poor record of looking into the future. And I just hope that this is a good time for the people in this town to look forward to Beaver Meadow. Well, it would have been great to have the city council people here at our school board meeting a week ago when the school board rammed broken ground down our throats. But no, there wasn't a one of you there, as far as I know. I might be wrong. You were there. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate that. This is actually rather enjoyable. I appreciate this.
Yeah, well, I'm glad. Please don't interrupt. I'm speaking now. This isn't my turn to talk. You've got plenty of turns to talk. This is my turn to talk. So now it's time for Beaver Meadow. I didn't see any, anything in those beautiful sketches and those pictures in the monitor about solar equipment on the roof of the new facility there. Not a one. So we're just going to keep paying. We're just going to, Concord taxpayers are just going to keep paying and paying and paying. And personally, I don't see the value of it. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Mayor-elect, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Sure. Good evening. I'm Steve Dupree. I know you have a long agenda, so I just want to correct one thing because I think there's some people who haven't had access to the information you have. Concord Group, when they left Concord, many people aren't aware that they also rented space in addition to Booton Street for me at the old Lincoln slash Chubb headquarters. They left as part of that movement. When they left, we've had a great relationship with them. We're sorry they left. They're a great tenant, a great part of Concord, but for business decisions, they've moved south. As part of winding up my relationship with them, I asked if they ever sold Booton Street, if they would consider offering it to me. They were very good about saying, we're going to hit a price to figure out its value. They did. Before it went on the market, they called me. The price was $3.6 million. I asked if in consideration for some other things wrapping up their leads, if they would discount it $100,000 to $3.5 million. They did. I put it under agreement. I knew that the city had an interest in it. Rather than me developing it for other uses, I brought it to the city's attention. I think it's a wise decision. I know the former speaker's a teacher, and teachers love facts, so here is a fact that I want everybody who hasn't read the reports to know in Concord. I am not making a dime on this. A hundred percent of the costs that you've had reported to you, that are in the public report, are the costs of me getting short-term financing for an empty building. Not one penny. I actually would like to amend the purchase and sale agreement at the end so I get $1, so I can add it to the $1 I got for the courthouse and the $1 I got for the bank in Hampshire stage and the $1 I got for the League of Hampshire Craftsmen, so I can have a collection of $1 for these projects. But I want to make sure that the former speaker's representation, that I was making a dime on this, is corrected on the record. I am not making a penny. It takes a lot of time and effort and potential risk and also encumbrance of my credit while we do this. I am doing it because I love this city. It's a great opportunity for this city. This city has been incredibly good to me, and we have the finest police department in the state, in my view, and this will give them an opportunity to have a better home. Those are the facts. Thank you.
Any questions, Dupree?
I... Hold on. Just a second.
I raised my hand.
You have a question?
I do, and I'm going to let you speak first, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Dupree, if the council were not to vote in favor of this, would you be redeveloping this property?
Either redeveloping it or letting it go back on the open market. I've got quite a few projects on tap right now.
Thank you.
Any else? Questions? I can't give you a dollar, but I may, we'll come up with 18 cents for you.
Haven't you accrued all those? Come on, you have more than that. You have to work another hour. I think you'll be doing that tonight.
Bus like testify. Mr. Schwiker. Welcome back.
Hello, I'm still Roy Schwiker. And what I'd like to say is that we have this procedure in the city that in June, you spend a lot of time working out the budget and, you know, trading off different, you know, wants and needs, and you come up with a budget. And it only takes us 50% to pass that budget, but it takes two-thirds to amend it later. On the other hand, the capital budget, because it's, you know, what's the word I want? Encumbering the city for future years, it takes two-thirds in the initial budget vote for the capital budget. And so my feeling is to amend the capital budget, it should not take a mere two-thirds. It'd take three-quarters or more if you multiply that out to more than three-quarters to make it the same increment that you have for the half to two-thirds. So my feeling is if you're going to add things to the capital budget, you need a stronger majority to pass them than just adding things to the regular budget. So that's the first thing on this. The second thing I'm going to say is, you know, we took my neighborhood park and built a courthouse on it, and the reason for it was because, you know, it would be convenient for lawyers. And then as soon as we do that, we moved the city solicitors' office from City Hall out to Horseshoe Pond. Now we're going to move it to Booton Street. So, you know, if you really wanted the courthouse there to make it convenient, why don't we have the city prosecutor's office a little bit closer instead of sticking it out far away? And the other thing I have to say is, I think that I agree with Counselor Kravik on this item at least, and that is that this is a property that should be developed commercially. You may remember, or probably most of you don't, that when we were relocating the general services garage, one important feature of it was to put it in a place that was not valuable to the other developers. You put it somewhere that would not take property off the commercial market. And I think that this building here is an example of a building that has a great future on the commercial... You may remember, or probably most of you don't, that when we were relocating the general services garage, one important feature of it was to put it in a place that was not valuable to the other developers. You put it somewhere that would not take property off the commercial market. And I think that this building here is an example of a building that has a great future on the commercial market. And so thereby putting the police headquarters in a building like that and taking money off the market is a bad idea, more particularly because I think you're going to find that this building is not what you want for a police headquarters. If you read the stuff that they want, they want a garage, they want a sally port, none of this building they don't have. So what you're going to do is you're going to spend $4 million to buy this building. Then it's going to cost four more to tell that run it. So it's going to cost the same $4 million to tear down this building. Now you bought yourself a vacant lot for $8 million. You could do better. I think this is a bad project. I think you should encourage Mr. Dupree to do just what he said, either redevelop himself or sell it to a real developer and find yourself a better location for a police station. The police station, the officers do not all sit around the station playing knuckle. They're, you know, distributed around the city on patrol. So it's not as important to have the police station centrally located because it might be some different familiarity with the general services garage, which is not centrally located anyway. So I guess I've told you, I think this is a bad idea. You're going to be spending far too much money for what's going to wind up as a vacant lot, and you should let Mr. Dupree get us some tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Speaker?
Thank you. Mr. Schmiker, I have sat here for four years, and you have never resisted an opportunity to come up and speak your mind on a project or a procedure. I just want to thank you for that. I really agree with you, but I appreciate, I appreciate the research you do and the thought you put into it, and I think you have a lot in the city. So thank you very much.
And this is your last chance to say that.
It is. Well, I wasn't sure. There's little items. I think you make them up again. Maybe one. I just wanted to get that. Thank you.
Who else wants to testify on this item? Anybody? Good evening and welcome, Mr. Rayner.
Good evening, Mayor Belleg, and Council. Thank you for the opportunity.
Can you pull the microphone closer if you want one?
Okay, is this better? Name is Valen Rayner, Ward 5. I have read the report in preparation for this testimony this evening. I have the report, staff report, as well as the purchase and sale agreement. So my first comment is that I'm not questioning the needs for the assessment for new police headquarters, either new or expansion thereof. I accept that. My question really focuses on more timing and procedural matters. And as far as Steve and his character, he's done nothing but good things for the city. High five. But, you know, I question, why is there needs to be here? Why didn't we just buy it direct through Concord Group? So in reading the purchase and sale agreement, I did notice that the seller, Mr. Dupree, has done a limited, has a material assessment specifically focused on asbestos that was results were given to the city in July. Then it goes on to detail that the city will in fact perform its due diligence, just as Matt Walsh had indicated. Because he failed to acknowledge or respond that it had been completed, so it's in the works, I presume. But purchase and sale's already been drafted. It's already a done deal. It's ready to go. It's waiting to be signed. And the closing won't be, it does acknowledge the closing won't be done till the due diligence is performed. The city has the option of questioning aspects of the agreement dependent on the results of the first phase of environmental assessment. But I say, what's the rush? Why do we need to take a vote tonight? Why not wait for the results of the environmental assessment? We should have the results already on asbestos, but there may be other issues relative to PCBs. It appeared that the diligence would be more comprehensive, which I support, relative to energy. Based on the age of the building, I agree with some others, it's likely to be recommended to be torn down, and there is demo cost. So I would suggest that this be deferred until after the due diligence has been completed, results have been reviewed by the city, for the negotiations with the seller, if need be, have been done. That's my comment.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Mr. Rayner? Do you know? Appreciate you coming up. Thank you so much. Anybody else wish to testify on the property for Booton Street? Welcome.
Hi. My name is Fallon Andrews. I'm a business owner here in Concord. I own Pillar Gallery and Projects on 205 North State Street. I do believe that this project does have an impact on the cultural and emotional state of New Hampshire. Since the pandemic, we have seen an uptick in police in the city in a way that does make people scared to go out and to enjoy this city, which is such a shame. I was pulling something out of my own gallery the other day, and I had a police officer stop me, questioning me. That shouldn't be normal. That shouldn't be okay here. And if we have another impact on this community that makes the police state bigger here in New Hampshire, I guarantee that we were going to have, especially for me in my 20s, you're going to have less business owners. You're going to have less impact from the younger generation because you guys are scaring us, and I want you to know that it is scary. And I just want to say that, and I think the whole community feels that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So this is a super respectful group, and I want to thank you all for being such respectful. But in terms of applauding and no commenting and such, just kind of let's be respectful with one another. Let people say what they need to say, okay? Anyone else wishing to testify on this particular item? Welcome.
Thank you. I'm the owner of the city council. I just want to talk a little bit about my experience.
If you would mind just introducing yourselves as well.
My name is Bistoashimiya. Yo, come on. I just want to talk a little bit about my experience. I've been trying so many times to form a relationship with our police officers, the chief and everybody else, but it's been really difficult to come up with a plan of how we can make this something for Concord, to make sure that everybody, residents and new Americans, people who do not understand the concept of having police in our cities, to make sure they're part of that and they understand the idea of policing to build, to have that relationship. But I haven't been successful in the kind of foothold on that. Having to come up with more ideas of more police station and more police in Concord, I think that's a question. Now, where are we going with that? When we haven't even been successful in having safe environment with the current police we have. So yeah, that's my experience that I think we should examine what other communities needs or what they think about this idea. And I haven't really heard or seen anything, any conversation around that, how minorities or the emerging communities, new Americans would think about this idea, even other ideas that we're talking about. I haven't had a conversation about that. It's a fake. Everybody needs to have a fair argument with our city government. That, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, last chance. All right, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you read item 35E, please?
Yes. It's a resolution establishing a technology, infrastructure, and equipment capital reserve appropriating some $112,521.25 as a transfer to the technology reserve and accepting the sum of $112,521.25 from Breeze Line for this purpose.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Members of the council, on December 20, 2021, the city entered into a cable TV franchise agreement with Atlantic Rodband, now known as Breeze Line. Section 7.3 of this part of this agreement requires Breeze Line to pay the city a total of $525,000 over a 10-year term and annual installment of $52,500. On September 27th, 2023, the city received a payment for amounts originally due on June 22nd, 2022, and July 1st, 2023, plus interest. The total amount of the payment is $112,521.25. Establishing reserve accounts for these funds and future payments will allow the city to plan for improvements in capital infrastructure, cabling, equipment, and other projects necessary to retain city technical services and the PEG access channels. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for the matter? Seeing that, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wish to testify? Seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item 35E, please.
It's an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, administrative code, chapter 35, classification and compensation plan, Schedule D of Article 35-2, classification index for a senior assistant city prosecutor.
Members of the council, the legal department requests the creation of a new position entitled Senior Assistant City Prosecutor. This position will maintain all the responsibilities associated with the assistant city prosecutor and take on certain supervisory responsibilities and other administrative functions as assigned by the city prosecutor. The position will also supervise the office in the event the city prosecutor is unavailable or out of the office for extended periods. So really looking at succession planning here also. With the creation of this position, and when this position is filled, we will reduce the number of full-time assistant city prosecutors from three to two. The creation and hiring of this position will not require any additional funding during this fiscal year. The labor grade is one step higher than classification for assistant city prosecutor and one step lower than city prosecutor. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Go to the seat.
Thank you. And I admit, this might be, I'm not good at math, but as I understood it, the expectation is when we create this position, it doesn't change the total number of attorneys in the prosecutor's office?
That's correct.
Okay. And so then the reference from changing from three to two is the expectation that we would reduce in the future, or it's just the same and we'll just have a city prosecutor and assistant, and then the two people, I'm sorry, the senior one and then the two below?
Two below. So to do it immediately, you would never have a situation where you have an extra position in there.
Got it. Great. Thank you.
At this point in time, we'll open the public hearing. Any wish to testify? Seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, item 35E.
Yes. It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $385,000 for general services department retention payments and authorizing the use of $385,000 in unassigned fund balance for this purpose.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Members of the council, during the past six months, the city general services department experienced a critical reduction of staffing due to employee resignations. The staffing reduction is in addition to typical employee staffing level attrition due to retirement. The president of the general services has eleven vacant full-time positions and seven part-time positions related to snow removal operations that is actively recruiting to fill these positions. The shortfall of staffing for winter operations is not unique to Concord. Other communities in the New Hampshire department are experiencing a 10-year experience as a chronic problem. In an attempt to mitigate the shortfall, the department's transportation is providing $5,000 stipend for a second year in order to mitigate the rapid and acute loss of critical staff associated with winter operations for city streets, sidewalks, the airport. General services strongly recommends a winter $300 stipend weekly for city full-time staff available related to winter operations for city streets, sidewalks, and airports. Generally, these stipends would be provided to staff with commercial driver's licenses. As you know, there's a shortage of those throughout the country right now, addressing winter operations. Further, the general services recommends a weekly stipend of $150 for staff supporting the performance of winter operations, namely wingers. The director, the deputy director, division heads are not eligible for stipend. The stipend is critical to remain competitive, retain current employees, and attract new staff as necessary to provide the level of service Concord has historically enjoyed the past 20 years. Should the staffing levels not return, significant delays will occur in implementing the city's winter operations policies, adversely impacting vehicular traffic during and immediately after the storm, including pedestrian traffic to our community's elementary schools. Continued erosion of staffing levels due to the resignation of employees seeking other jobs will further reduce the department's ability to carry out the city's winter operations policies. The total cost of the stipends is $385,000, and unassigned fund balance may be used as a funding source. Glad to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? May I approach?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Mayor?
No, no, but yes. I'm the chairman. Mr. City Manager, is it, would it be fair to characterize the stipend as a retention bonus?
Yes, it would.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
But also, I would say also a recruitment bonus.
And a recruitment bonus.
Recruitment stipend.
Any else? Seeing that, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Anybody wish to testify?
Hello, it's me again. And it seems like we did this with the public safety people. It was discovered that in addition to paying the bonuses, there were other things like retirement and social security and whatnot that had to be paid. So my question is, is that going to come out of this amount of money or is that going to come out of some secret other funds somewhere? And you, I know you don't answer questions here, but you'd be thinking about that as to whether it's just a whole amount or whether there's some additional amount somewhere. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. And last one, test. Okay, seeing that, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, item 35E, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $10,308,000 in the Beaver Meadow Golf Course Clubhouse and Building Project for the construction of a new facility and related improvements and authorizing the issuance of bonds and notes in the sum of $10,308,000 for this purpose.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Members of the council, Mr. LeBrun, would you like us to present? Just so you know, there's also public testimonies received, and also additional public testimonies received. So everything up until about City Hall, noon, anything we received from noon today is in here.
Do you mind introducing yourselves?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. To my left, I have Phil Davis, the Director of Operations for Beaver Meadow Golf Course. To my right, I have Doug Proctor from HL Turnpike. And to his right is Brian Arish from Milestone Construction. Tonight is the presentation for the Beaver Meadow Facility project. Doug Proctor is going to do the beginning portion of it with the actual design pieces of it. So what you're looking at here is the proposed plan for the building, and what we've done is, because there's a large issue with parking on Beaver Meadow Drive, what we've what we've tried to do is increase the parking lot from, presently it's at ninety-six spaces, and we're up to two-twenty in this. And then we had a fifteen thousand square foot building placed where the existing building was, and the event tent has moved a little bit south, contrary to the gentleman prior that was speaking about solar. Says right there that that's the solar area and a flat area at the top of the building. So there's six thousand square feet of solar panels planned for up there if you choose to go for. This is the floor plan. It's fifteen thousand square feet. It's kind of, has four different zones in it. So there's the pro shop to the, to the left with four simulator bays. There's the, the top of the building has a dining room and two event spaces that face onto the golf course and a patio area there. Center area is storage and kitchen areas, and then the front is restrooms and then a conference room and ski and classroom and storage. This is a proposed front elevation of the building. It's a single-story building. And the main entrance there going in, and the off to the right side is where deliveries happen off the drive, or drive aisle coming in. Another view of the front of the building. Canopy goes all the way through the building, leading you through. So from, as you walk into the main entrance, you can see straight through the building to the golf course. And then this is the rear view of the pro shop. The code? Just this button? No, it just, it's lagging. Okay. So this is the patio area in the rear. The set of doors coming out the back is what I was talking about, being able to see through the building. This, this replaces the patio of the existing building. Another view of that shot, dining room and two event spaces leading out onto that patio space. And those event spaces can also use that patio space for any gathering. It's a winter shot, you know, we could have dining and drinks or whatever out there during skiing or ice skating or whatnot. Another shot during winter, what's planned. Great. Thank you very much, Doug. Thank you. The committee, with the first meeting with the mayor, there were a number of goals that were put up for consideration. One of them was to be creative and innovative. The second was to continue to keep it as a year-round community facility for everyone to enjoy, golf, skiing, snow shooting, elections, special events, and just make it inclusive for, you know, everybody in the community. Think long-term, for the next fifty to seventy-five years. Consider the environment, be as green as possible. We've got the solar array on the top in the report. There is a consideration for if the council would like to add a geothermal. And then consider a partnership with New Hampshire Golf. And as everybody knows, that was, while it was considered and worked on for many months, New Hampshire Golf ultimately decided that they would go in a different direction. Values to the community, it's a city asset to be maintained, recreational space for, again, golf, cross-country skiing, skating, and many other activities. Youth golf is very big at Beaver Meadow. Ski League is very big at Beaver Meadow. The Bill Koch Ski League is very big at Beaver Meadow. There are many nonprofits that actually host events at Beaver Meadow. During the golf-playing season, we have about twenty-three events, twenty-three nonprofit events, and that represents about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of revenue for Beaver Meadow. I don't know how much the revenue is for each one of those nonprofits, but you know, it certainly is of value to the community for whatever they raise during those events. The overall summary of the construction costs, the total is ten point eight million dollars. There was four hundred and ninety thousand that was appropriated last year during the budget process for design and engineering, and that leaves the ten point three million dollars that is presented here as the consideration for council for an appropriation. Project breakdown, the building construction, that includes demolition of the existing building, that's five point nine million dollars. The site work for the parking lot, that's eight hundred and fifty thousand. Site work, excuse me, that's the site work and parking lot. The site work for walkways in the building, six hundred and twenty-two. Construction contingency, seven hundred and thirty-eight. The construction management fee, three thirty-two. Additional engineering, three thirty-five. The solar array on the, on the top of the building, we're also considering battery backup so we can prolong the use of that solar energy that is generated, two hundred and fifty thousand. Simulator equipment, two hundred thousand. There'll be four simulator rooms in the, in the proposed building. Temporary trailers for operations during the construction phase, that's three hundred thousand. Communication, security, access, furniture, a hundred and sixty-three thousand. A generator to keep operations moving along, even power outages, sixty thousand. Landscaping, signage, utilities, a hundred and eighty-eight. Owner contingency, two hundred and three. And then commissioning, testing, moving, all other expenses, a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. That's how we get to the ten point three million dollars that's in the resolution for the council. The debt, the debt service, the debt and the interest rate, again, the ten point seven million dollars includes the four hundred and ninety thousand dollars that was originally appropriated. So we added all of it together for the presentation. Looking at a twenty-year term on the bond, there are two sections of it, or two portions of it. One would be an exempt portion, and one could be a taxable portion. We'll have to work that out with our bond council when we get to that part of the actual bonding of the project, but I wanted to make sure that I wasn't understating the amount of interest that would be accrued on the bond. So we used three point three percent for about eight point six million dollars and three and three-quarter percent for about two point one million dollars, or two point two million dollars for the total's ten point seven, or ten point eight. I checked with our financial advisors to see what the current rates were going for, and it was about three point two to three point six. So hopefully I'm in the ballpark of what those numbers are for this projection. The debt service breakdown, I know this screen has a lot of numbers on it, and it's a little bit difficult to read, but this information is on the city website, both on the Beaver Meadow website and on the city council agenda, so that you can go down and look through it and see all the different pieces. Basically, it's a twenty-year bond. The principal amount, the principal in debt service payment for the first year would be eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven forty-four. A golf fund portion of that would be three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven forty-four. And then the general fund supportive of that would be five twenty-five. And I did that same calculation down for each year of the debt service payment, which would be the twenty years. The tax rate impact, that is the part that would impact the property owners. We generally do it on a three hundred thousand dollar property as we're going through the budget process, so I try to maintain that consistency. On a three hundred thousand dollar property, the first year in two thousand and twenty-six, that would be the first year the payment would be due, that would be thirty dollars on a three hundred thousand dollar property, or seven dollars and fifty cents per quarter. You can see that it does go up slightly through to two thousand and thirty-one, and then it starts to drop off through two thousand and forty-four. We were looking at a couple of different grants that might, we might have potential for. The first was a land auto conservation fund grant. Maximum grant award is five hundred thousand dollars. In order to apply for the grant or be granted the grant, we would have to comply with the Build America, Buy America. We worked with our construction manager to determine what the additional cost would be in order to comply with that. Ended up being about nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. What I didn't add in here is we would also have to do a full analysis of the property, the, I think of the word, sorry, survey. Thank you very much. Full survey of the property, that's my fault. And that would be about nine thousand dollars to do a full survey, so it actually is more than nine hundred thousand dollars. It didn't really make sense to do that, and the city council actually did not authorize us to apply for the grant at their November city council meeting. The second grant that we took a look at was the CDFA, the Community Development Finance Authority Grant. This was the remaining ARCA funding that they had for community centers in the state. A lot of people probably read what was in the newspaper brought in. There was a lot of details regarding the things that needed to be met. We did attend the informational meetings. We met directly with the CDFA staff, and you know, they said that this project just wouldn't qualify under their community center program requirements. We're also looking at the New Hampshire saves, which is the energy rebates for certainly trying to be as energy efficient as possible. We'll apply for the grants as the project progresses, but we will need to, you know, see what the overall usage of energy is in order for them to determine the calculations. We would expect that, you know, if, if we are qualified for that, we'd probably get some at least between ten, twenty thousand dollars as a rebate on this. We took a look at geothermal. It is not included in the overall costing of this. It is something that if the city council would like to do, it could be added. The capital cost would be about four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Make save about twenty-five thousand dollars in heating costs, which is great, but it will probably cost about twenty-five thousand dollars or more in electricity costs for the electric pumps in order to pump the fluids through the geothermal system. One of the things that we talked about with our engineers and the construction managers is that all of the folks that have embarked on geothermal event or geothermal portion of a project, they've come back and said, wow, we just didn't realize how expensive the electricity costs would be on that. And we probably wouldn't be able to use, the, the solar project would be just about enough to use a regular electricity in the building, probably wouldn't be enough in order to offset any of these costs. Would be some disruption to the core during operation, the pro shop and food service wouldn't operate from temporary trailers. We'd look at having that, have the funds that we've set aside for trailers. We'd be working to make it as easy as possible for customers during the construction. Certainly, we want to keep our customers as happy as possible and able to play golf, ski, skate, whatever they're doing. We are working on a temporary solution for simulators during the construction, so we would have to come up with a solution for that. And then have temporary bathrooms that would be more than just simply porta potties for a year. We'd have to do something that would be a little bit more dynamic, especially during the cold weather seasons. The construction timing, it would be about twelve months from start to finish, if approved by the city council. Tonight, the estimated start date would be September, two thousand and twenty-four. The impact of the delayed construction start, it would be about ten percent of the total project, so we estimate it'd be about a million dollars additional cost if the project wouldn't start by next fall. The operational changes to revenues, once we're in full operations, so this would be anticipated the first full year in two thousand and twenty-seven, we would expect hopefully about seventy-five thousand dollars additional increased simulator revenue, and about fifty thousand dollars of increased restaurant and event revenue. We, and I'll show in the, in the pro forma in just a moment, expect that there would be a little bit of a decrease in cost for both simulator and restaurant revenue during the construction phase. We would anticipate increased membership revenue, which is what the city council approved at their July meeting for the rates for both memberships and daily fees and everything else that they approved at that time. That's included in the pro forma. The increased daily fee revenue was thirty-seven thousand dollars. Excuse me, the membership revenue was a hundred and fifty-four. The daily fee is thirty-seven, and all the other revenues were thirty-three thousand dollars. The expense changes to operations, we would think that this would start in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six and then increase annually thereafter. Janitorial staff, we would anticipate a couple of part-time staff in order to keep the building clean seven days a week, that's forty-nine thousand. Janitor supplies for the year, about twenty-four thousand. Simulator supplies, a couple thousand, added to what we already have within the existing budget. Repairs and maintenance, twenty-eight thousand dollars in addition to what we already have in the current budget. You know, we do think for the first two years of the new building, the repairs and maintenance would not be that substantial, but you know, certainly they will increase a bit as time goes on. Window washing, we left that in there. That was from the original three-story construction project that we had originally proposed, so that could come out. Clubhouse maintenance reserve, we're proposing to fifty thousand dollars aside each year in order to, into our reserves for future more significant projects, you know, depending on type of roofing and things like that, certainly we need to add roof, and there would certainly be other capital needs throughout the life of the project, so we're trying to set some money aside early to get that moving. We expect about twenty thousand dollars additional natural gas. If we do the geothermal, obviously that number would change some, but there would be an offset between natural gas and electricity. Electricity, we think to be an additional eleven thousand dollars in addition to what we're already spending. We do think the solar savings would be about twenty-five thousand dollars on electricity. And water and wastewater, we expect about six thousand dollars additional, just for larger kitchen or also for additional bathrooms and things like that. And then all the other expenses that we have in the normal pro forma that we kind of move forward on an annual basis is what we're showing. The pro forma is very difficult to see. There's a lot of numbers here. I did send out to the city council a little bit larger sheet for everybody to be able to, to read, but for folks at home and anybody else that would like to see this externally, can go to the city website and see all this information. The first three lines are the first three columns of the pro forma in FY twenty-three, budget, twenty-three, and twenty-four budget. Those are all the exact same that were in the FY twenty-four adopted budget. As you can see at the bottom, the very bottom, where it's extending working capital, that is seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars. That's what we anticipated for the FY twenty-four budget. Hopefully, that will be a little bit more. In FY twenty-five, you can start to see the impact of some of the changes of the construction project. The revenue would decrease a little bit for both the simulator and the restaurant, and that's twenty-five thousand dollars each for those years. We would anticipate a gain or a net, projected net at the end of the year of about a hundred and fifty-seven thousand in two thousand and twenty-five. That would give us a spending fund balance of about eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. In FY twenty-six, that's when we start to see some of the other revenues come in, and then most of the expenses come through. And that, you'll see at the bottom, the projected net is a loss of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. I'll explain that in a moment. If you go down kind of to the middle section, middle bottom section of the revenues, you can see that the restaurant rent, the adjustment would be, continue on for an additional year because we'd still be in that final construction phase piece. We would start to see hopefully some additional simulator revenue because we anticipate that we would have most of the winter season for simulator operations. And then the first portion of the general fund for debt service, that would be five hundred and twenty-five that I identified in the previous slides. If we go down to the expenses, you can see that the, we have the regular O and M expenses, the transfer out to general fund for general overhead and other items. And then if you look down, you can see the comp fringe, which is forty-nine thousand, two sixty-one. And then all the other expenses that I kind of identified earlier in the previous slide are listed here. That produces an overall, excuse me, I'll go down to that last section that would show the clubhouse debt service, the eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven forty-four. That's the first payment for the debt service. So the general fund portion, that would be five twenty-five, and then the golf fund portion of it would be three hundred and sixty thousand, the number that I had identified in the previous slide. That does produce a loss of three twenty-nine. That's the expected loss in this pro forma, because now we're starting to work down the fund balance that I identified earlier, and that fund balance of eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand now drops down to five hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And so we would do the same thing for a few years, and the intent is to try to work with that ending working capital, to try to keep it in the positive as the years go on, not a lot of positive, but try to keep it in the positive. And that's how we manage the golf fund portion of the debt service and the general fund portion of the debt service. Then each one of those expense and revenue lines, we forecasted forward using a, you know, just a, an adjustment, CPI adjustment, two to three percent, three to four percent, depending on which category of expense or revenue that we were looking at. I would like to point out too, in FY twenty-six, we also did include a reduction in revenue for, in, in yearly fees or seating passes, for about twenty thousand dollars for resident discount. The city manager asked to include that in here because that was part of a discussion that occurred at the last deliberations for the golf rates. So just to kind of add something in there, and if that discussion comes back, and if that's something the council wants to do. I'd be glad to answer any questions that anybody has, and just anything else that you would like to talk about.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the gentleman or for the manager?
Thank you. I'm just looking at the background that you provided with your report, and I just want to kind of clarify the timeline. Is it correct that the committee, the first ad hoc committee, the clubhouse committee, traveled around to different clubhouses and envisioned a larger facility before receiving the facility assessment? Is that correct? The facility assessment was not available until the last meeting of that group?
I tested my memory on the dates. I believe the facility assessment was available at the beginning of those meetings. I believe the facility assessment was available at the beginning of those meetings.
I believe the beginning, the first meeting was June 22nd, and the facility assessment is dated November 5th.
So you're right, it was afterwards.
Right. So it was, and at that meeting, December 2nd, I believe, there were three committee members? Was there a member from H.L. Turner who presented the facility assessment to them?
I don't believe anybody from H.L. Turner was at that meeting, at least when I looked at the minutes of the meeting, nobody was listed there.
So that was just the three committee members who decided to rebuild versus renovate at that meeting?
The majority of the, if there was a quorum of the committee there to take that vote, yes, ma'am.
The three. And then I just have another question. Yes, yes, one last one about timing. I noticed that in the discussion, it said that Turner Group and Milestone Construction received the winning bids, but Milestone Construction, they were awarded the construction manager bid well before the building committee was seated. They were the construction manager, it was an RFQ for primary projects, the Canal Riverfront Park and the clubhouse, and that was awarded in December. So the Milestone Construction Manager came first before the design RFQ, is that correct?
Well, there are two pieces of that, counselor. One of them is that the city took, embarked on initiative to have a couple of construction managers available to the city in order to get projects completed in a reasonable timeframe. The city went out to RFP and there were two construction manager groups that were selected for that. Milestone Construction was one of them. Once we got to the process of getting to Beaver Meadow facility and hiring one of those two firms for the construction manager, we actually reached out to both of those firms, spoke to both of them, and they both submitted a fee proposal to us for what their fee would be in order to construct the project. They were both qualified firms, and we were confident that either one would do a good job. That's how we selected Milestone Construction to actually do this project. They weren't selected for this project before that, which you're reading in those items, the Riverfront Park and Beaver Meadow, those were projects that were projected for the future if the council's.
Right. Ahead of a police station, fire station, playground, they were listed as the primary projects, that's correct for that? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Justice Bushard, Brooklyn?
Thank you, mayor. When the golf course clubhouse committee recommended that to build a new clubhouse and take down the old clubhouse, that report was on the December 13, 2021 city council consent agenda. And the council did have an opportunity to either remove it from the agenda, but the council did vote and accept that report. And that report was to approve support for a new clubhouse and replace the parking and design money for 2023 capital budget. And that report in December 13, 21, agenda item 18, also included the H.L. Turner facility assessment report, so that was out there for those counselors at that time to the city. And the report also went, asked for a CIP appropriation to do the design for the clubhouse. And that, that funding was in the June 2022 FY '23 budget, in which included the funding for clubhouse design. So councilor said information and time to review and vote whether on budget or in the December, is that correct?
Ma'am.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if there was an opportunity for an H.L. Turner presentation on the facility assessment, if there was one to either of the ad hoc clubhouse, the building committee, the golf advisory, or city council, if one was conducted?
I don't think they did, I don't recall.
Thank you. You mentioned that in the pro forma, there's a change to the expected rental fee for the restaurant. Can you just explain how the restaurant operations currently work and how you would anticipate they would work if we choose to build a new clubhouse?
Thank you. So currently, we have an agreement with our current restaurant vendor who's doing a fantastic job at Beaver Meadow, and that is a three-year agreement that expires in December of 2025. Right now, that vendor pays us approximately $50,000 a year for providing food services to restaurant customers, Beaver Meadow customers. They have the opportunity, the first opportunity to provide for outings, things like that. So any food and beverage is sold at Beaver Meadow, they, for the most part, they have the first opportunity to do that, save for a couple of events that we have included in the contract. As part of that, we also negotiated a clause in there that we were looking at building a new building, and that, you know, we understood that there might be some disruption of service in that building during that time. So we would have to come back and come to an agreement on what a reduction in rent would be in order to be fair to, you know, all parties based on what the situation was and the length of that time. For a new agreement, you know, we would work with the vendor to come up with a proposal, and either it would be a flat fee like we do now, or most likely, or more likely, you know, maybe come to some sort of agreement, it would be a percentage of sales overall. You know, with a restaurant, a new restaurant that's being designed here, we would anticipate that there would be a higher revenue stream that would come in for restaurants, events, and things like that. So we would think that there would be more opportunity for fees. We have that all spelled out right now, obviously that's something that we have to do as we go forward, but we still have another couple of years left on that contract.
Justice Spears?
Thank you. I don't know if you have the right one, Mr. LeBron, but can you speak to the, in the committee conversations, the replace as opposed to rebuild? Just refresh our memory as to why rebuild was not a good option, if that was the case?
So when, if you recall, this all started when we put $100,000 in to replace some doors and windows and redo the two bathrooms, which were in desperate need of work, as well as all the doors and windows. Certainly when we got pricing in order to do that, it was, we were way under what the actual costs were going to be. So in the subsequent budget year, we came back to the council and said, you know, that we were asking for another $125,000 basically to do that same work that we had requested the previous year. At that time, the council said, hey, you know, we should take a look at this and not appropriate any additional funds. In fact, we should probably take away the funds that were already done, and then put a committee together to take a look at, you know, should we put this kind of money into that facility, or should we look at doing something different? That committee was appointed by the mayor at that time, and the committee got together and looked at a number of different golf courses that had built buildings within the last 10 years, and, you know, looked at what their operations were. Looking at that, and then, you know, as the facility assessment came in and looking at the condition of the building, looking at the layout of the building that's there, you know, if you're going to do something different as opposed to putting, you know, any money into that building at that time, it certainly needed a lot more work than just the, than just the doors and windows and the bathrooms. You know, it would probably make sense to do something more significant in order to make that facility viable for, you know, the next 50 or 75 years. And so that was really what the committee was looking at and said, does it make sense to put money into this facility? And anybody who's gone and taken a look at the facility, you know, can see that definitely needs a lot of help, as well as the parking lot and the walkways, and, you know, there's a lot of broken pavement and things that need to be done one way or another, so. And that was really when the, you know, committee, in their estimation, said, you know what, it probably makes more sense to build a new facility as opposed to doing anything here. And that's when the recommendation came to the city council for that purpose.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. LeBron. Could you explain, I've had questions from constituents about what the golf fund is. Could you explain what the golf fund is, and where the money comes from, and how it relates to the paying off bond?
So, you know, the golf fund is a special revenue fund of the city. We have a number of special revenue funds and enterprise funds, but the golf fund being a special revenue fund of the city, certainly the operations of the fund are funded through the player fees and any other revenues that were generated there. There were a number of years that the golf fund did not support it, it often required some support from the general fund, and that's one of the reasons for the special revenue fund status versus enterprise fund status, because in enterprise, in enterprise funds, typically the user fee pay for all of the, all of the operations. In special revenue funds, there oftentimes are funds necessary from the general fund in order to maintain operations or capital infrastructure costs, and that's the case here, is with some of the other funds that we have too. And basically what we have here is that, you know, while the golf fund did have some difficult years in 2016 through 20, I think, are the years, you know, certainly the last few years have been very profitable for the golf fund, and certainly the pandemic didn't hurt. But, you know, right now, we have an extremely vibrant playing community, we have an extremely vibrant skiing community when there's snow, and certainly when there's ice on the pond so that folks can ski the pond as well, and then any other, you know, things that we can do over there, so. It is, you know, it pretty much pays for its own operations currently and has been setting some money aside in the fund balance, and then to build a capital project like this, certainly it takes some support from the general fund.
Follow-up, Your Honor. Is the current building ADA compliant?
I want to say no, I don't think that it meets that category, so any major significant construction that's done, even if it's a refurbishment, would have to meet those ADA compliance pieces, but I really would have to, I'm the finest guy, I gotta look at some of these guys for some help there.
The building is accessible, but there are areas that need to be touched up, there are still issues in different locations and things like that, so.
Follow-up, Your Honor. Are the bathrooms ADA compliant?
I believe so, I'd have to go back and read the report again.
Okay. Follow-up, Your Honor. Thanks. Mr. LeBron, you mentioned that it was not worthwhile for us to apply for land and water conservation funds for this project, and you outlined that, you know, that it would really cost us more. Have we ever used any land and water conservation funds for any of the Beaver Meadow projects?
Yeah, there were, there were funds used back in, I want to say back in the 60s, I don't think, I think that was the last time that funds were accepted for Beaver Meadow. So a big portion of the property is encumbered by land and water conservation fund easements and things like that.
Follow-up, Your Honor. You say that it's encumbered by easements, what does that mean? I mean, what kind of easements are on the property?
Basically, by accepting those funds, you're not able to use the property for any other purpose other than recreational purposes in perpetuity. So this is part of the state of New Hampshire and the federal government National Park Service that we went into an agreement with back in the 1960s that pretty much encumbered that property, and, you know, this is what the city can use the property for unless, you know, there's a significant swap of property for some other, some other parcel that would be deemed appropriate by the park service.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Anyone else?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. LeBron, the assessment that was done by H.L. Turner Group, and I would certainly appreciate a H.L. Turner Group answer to this as well. At the back of the report, there is a summary of items that were end of life at the time the report was done in November of 2021, and the estimated cost of those were about $917,000. This is a number that people have been floating around as the cost of the repairs on the building, being that it was a 2021 number. We've only been looking at reconstruction, do we even have a current figure for what it would cost to fix this building that is not ADA accessible in the ladies room?
We, we do not have a current cost of that. The only current cost that we have would be to do the electrical, which was not included in the original report, and that would be an additional $212,000 that would be added on to that $900,000. But, you know, that $900,000 was a, the engineer's estimate of what the, who directed the issues that they noted in that report. I couldn't give you an estimate of what that is today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. I'd like to go back to Mayor-elect Kaplan's comments on the special revenue fund and the enterprise fund, and I have a recollection of like 2018 maybe, the council having a conversation, I think it started with the arena, that at both times, both the arena and the golf fund was in the enterprise fund. And during the discussion, the council came to the conclusion that neither one of these facilities, although they pay for their operating costs, when it came to big projects like repaving a parking lot or big renovations, that they, they just couldn't do it and have reasonable fees. And I believe, if I'm right, and maybe the city manager can help me out here, I think when we moved the golf course and arena and maybe the conservation fund from an enterprise fund to the other fund, the special fund, special revenue fund, maybe in the FY '20 budget, recognizing that these really weren't enterprise funds that could pay for every cost, is, am I close?
You're pretty close, and the city manager is really good about the dates, but I just want to say that it was the arena fund, the golf fund, and the solid waste fund that had been classified as enterprise funds, and we had worked with our auditors and talked about the classification of those funds, you know, as we're operating them and then as they're being reported in our annual financial statements. And because of the contributions from the general fund in those funds over the years, not necessarily all during that time, but previous years, and certainly the solid waste fund gets a contribution of an excess of $1 million each year, you know, certainly that kind of takes it out of that enterprise fund status, so. And 2020 was the first year in the budget, but I think the manager actually has other dates that are more specific that you identified.
So in the fiscal year 2019, that year, the end of the year, I think probably November, December, you actually, the fiscal policy advisory committee, made a recommendation to the city council, and the city council had a very large discussion on this about what to do, because one of the issues that kept coming up during the capital budget discussions was either these, these types of funds are going to continue to support themselves and continue to deteriorate because they don't generate enough revenues to cover operating and capital. So you really made a decision at that time, in 2019, and directed staff that when we put together the 2020 budget, that we actually moved those to a special revenue funds. And the idea would be that work towards generating enough revenues to cover the operating costs, but understanding that major capital costs, not things like triplex mowers or, you know, smaller, smaller $50,000, $60,000 items, that they are going to, they would be covered by the general fund eventually. And the reason for that was, you, in a lot of this discussion, I believe, it's Ryan Kemp, remember, who, I think you brought up the arena, the discussion was, how, how much do you start charging in fees for people, so for equity purposes, right? Do you want, you want everybody to be able to use them, or most people to be able to use them, or do you want to charge at rates as high as you possibly can to generate as much revenue as you can to help cover the operating and the capital cost? And the decision was made at that time, try to keep the rates reasonable as you can and not charge as much as you possibly can. So that's why I thought that eventually, capital fund, many, very high cap projects, particularly the discussion regarding the arena, and the, it was, it was the parking lot, and the parking lot was going to cost a million dollars to do, because of all the drainage issues and proximity to the river, so I hope that helps.
Thank you for helping my memory, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Justice Spears?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just following up on Counselor Krevick's question for a moment, would it be safe to say that the $914,000 renovation cost in present day would be much more than that, given what we've seen in terms of the rising costs of the project proposal we have in front of us now?
I would be comfortable saying it would be much more than that, but I can't tell you.
Yes, I understand that, thank you. Follow-up, Your Honor. The other question I have is related to possible renovations. I understand that the November 5, 2021 H.L. Turner report indicated that the condition of the building currently is rated poor to fair, but given that, is there any possibility that the building could in fact be renovated, partially at least, in conjunction with less than $10,000? partially at least, in conjunction with, let's say, some expansion? And that we might from that, first of all, would that be feasible? Second of all, would, would, could we anticipate that that might be, might come in at a cost lower than the current proposal before us now?
I would think that if you're not changing the footprint and you're renovating, that it would have lower costs, like any renovation. Once you get into it, you know, then you start to see, once you start pulling walls apart and start pulling siding off, you start to see what else is underneath. Then you have to address those issues that you may not have contemplated at the beginning of the project. If you add expansion, if you add an addition, things like that, you know, would end up being less expensive than building a new building. That would be hard for me to say until we really take a look at what the scope of the expansion will be, using the existing footprint with just additions on one side or another. And, but, you know, once we would get what some design concept would be, you know, I'm sure that our folks here would be able to price that out and get estimates of what those costs would be.
Thank you, Your Honor. One more follow up, I could. And, but I just want to point out and correct you if I'm wrong. I don't believe that there is any capacity in the current building to facilitate, for example, the request of the Ski to Beeve group for storage space and for the potential, let's say rental of skate equipment or skating equipment at one point. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be correct. As you take the space away from something else.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Congressman.
Thank you. I was just, the city manager triggered a thought. I know we look at, you're a very data-driven group and you have a software system, T-Snap. Does T-Snap have the capability to determine residency for membership?
T-Snap has the capability for that residency information to be put into the system. We don't currently put it into the system.
If somebody pays with a credit card, it doesn't automatically populate?
It doesn't automatically populate by paying with a credit card. It, what happens is if somebody were to go online to register for a tee time online, they could put their information in that way. But we don't, in, in the, in years prior, and I think that stopped before the pandemic, and just as we were getting into T-Snap, we would actually take forms, paper forms, and have all that residency information. When we started doing it right in the system, we basically just took the person's name, their email address, and their credit card was processed through. We don't keep that credit card information. We don't use it for anything else other than to charge that one charge. And, you know, it's not something that we have the ability to go back to based on the credit card if that information wasn't logged into the system, either by a city employee or if they did it themselves when they registered online.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you. How many rounds has the golf course done in the last three years?
I have to go to our expert on that one.
Excuse me. It sat there for a while without talking. No, thank you. Approximately about 90,000 rounds. We do about 30,000 rounds, give or take, a year.
Follow up. What portion of those rounds are greens fees?
So greens fees make up about 65% of our rounds.
Do, do we track at all, you know, are these people, is it the same person who's playing a lot or do we track whether it was, you know, one visit or more than one visit?
We do have, we have the ability. We don't actually, we don't go in and necessarily sit this person plays five times. But if, I would say that returning customers are generally between one and five times a year. So you could probably figure out a math equation to make, make it seem how many you, you have.
One more follow up. So when I see reports that only a couple hundred people use the golf course, that be accurate?
No.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation tonight. Councilor Bouchard listed several committee meetings or conversations with the city council over the last few years. And Councilor Brown asked about the T-Snap system and residency. Is it true that the city council has declined and the Beaver Meadow Golf Course Advisory Committee has declined to collect data around resident versus non-resident users over the years?
I do remember a vote by the advisory committee that suggested, the vote was to collect the data. And I believe it might have been a tie vote and it failed. So the data was not voted to collect, their advisory group. I do not recall if the city council actually took that same kind of motion. But I just, my memory's not always that good.
Anyone else? We're good? Okay, thank you very much, folks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so before we open the public hearing, I just want to, first of all, say that this is exactly the hope that we're, we're looking for, I was looking for in having a public hearing. We have received everyone's communications, sharing with the council people's opinions and thoughts. And I really appreciate the folks who took time to, whether it be sign a petition or to write an email, or to just stop one of us on the streets or whatever it is. But your input has made this much, much better process. And I think your input has asked a lot of really good, simple questions. And that is exactly what this was all intended for. So thank you very much for your participation. So for purposes of the public hearing, my apologies, I just wanted, just to get a lay of the land. So just by a show of hands, real quick show of hands, who generally likes the proposal as it has been presented by these gentlemen tonight? Okay. And how many people would like to see some alternative or, or not all to what they heard tonight? Okay, great. So, so let me tell you what I'm going to do. We're going to open a public hearing, which is what you're here for. Anybody wanting to testify, we're going to listen to what you have to say, and we all want to hear that. I will remind you, we have received a lot of public written comments already, so you don't need to repeat that if you've already said something. We already have all that. But what I'm going to do is ask the city council, after we come to a point or a point which we're pretty much done with protest morning, I'm going to ask the council to recess the public hearing. Recession, I'm what I'm saying, to call the chair. The chair at that time will be the new mayor, Mayor Champlin. So the purpose of the recess will be so that anybody who didn't testify will get a chance to come back and share their thoughts later on. That's number one. Two is, I would ask that the committee take the proposal back to the committee, listen to what the community has said, what they like and what they don't like, et cetera. And a lot of the questions need to be, and we've heard a lot of the answers tonight, but to package those in a way that, do you change the proposal? Do you stay with what you have? Do you decide to just let the building fall in itself and decay? Whatever, whatever the committee wants to do and present back to the council. So after, so that's, that's what I'm going to propose, and I'm going to ask the council to consider. So it's, we'll listen to what everyone has to say, but I'm going to ask the council to recess, recess the public hearing and to send the report back to the committee for further consideration. Just long as everybody understands that. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Councilor talk.
Thank you, Mayor. For 30 for those residents in attendance, would that mean it would still have a 24 hours notice for the city council agenda or could be picked up by the call of the chair at any city council meeting in a new term?
No, you would be, you would give all the same notices that you would to any public hearing, but recess as opposed to, so with that, any other questions? So who would like to testify? We'll put it right here in the front row.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councils. Thanks for having me. I'm Tom Kroto, and I'm going to read some notes. So my name is Tom Kroto. I'm a member of the Ad-Hoc Golf Clubhouse Committee. Been a meeting for some time now and have gone through a few revisions of the plan, as you heard earlier. My reason for being selected to the committee, I believe, and among other things, is that I'm not a golfer. So my role really was to contribute to the average citizen who may or may not want a new golf course clubhouse. Our first brainstorming sessions, we were told that the sky was the limit and to think outside the box, and I did. I thought of a pool, I thought of some pickleball courts and walking trails and just trying to figure out how could I include as many other folks who are non-golfers like myself? Others said we needed to improve the cross-country skiing and the accommodations for those folks in terms of meeting for instruction and storage for cross-country skiing. Then how about we increase the parking? Open up the restaurant for folks and skaters to get a snack. All the interest in making the golf course and clubhouse more inviting to the general public. And the committee decided that if we had a great restaurant, the general public would come and enjoy it as well, looking out over green, pleasant wooded area. Who doesn't want to sit on a patio and enjoy a nice meal with friends? And, oh, meeting spaces for the public to rent for birthdays, weddings, or just occasional meetings. I personally know the tremendous cost of gatherings for 100 to 150 people and how difficult it can be to book one of those spaces from time to time. Fortunately, many of those ideas stuck, and as I mentioned, some came with revision. So this is the capital city. We've spent many dollars improving our downtown and it's beautiful. Very proud of it. Other spaces, and it's beautiful and continuing to grow. We heard from the proclamation that Mayor-elect Champlin wrote, excuse me, read of all the great improvements that have happened in this city. Why not have a beautiful clubhouse to add to our image that would replace the aging, outdated building and be available for more of our non-golfing or golfing public? And I thank you for your time.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like to next?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Robert Messini. I live in Ward 5. And I thank you very much for this opportunity. I also am using a written statement that's to keep my train of thought from going off the rails, which it often does, and get it to A to B quickly. I don't think anybody disagrees that we need to do something about the Beaver Meadow Clubhouse, whether renovation or rebuilding. But either way, one question puzzles me. In 2018, 19, a committee appointed by the mayor raised largely from private donors, local businesses, and hockey-related groups 40% of the funds for new skate house at White Park, another publicly owned building that serves the recreational needs of our community. I'm wondering why we are not proposing to do likewise with the Beaver Meadow Clubhouse, which otherwise will cost taxpayers $10.3 million, almost 10 times the cost of the state skate house. Last Wednesday, at the meeting of the Concord School Board, I saw the discord and the distrust that result when elected officials reject the clearly expressed wishes of a majority of citizens. During the run-up to that meeting, I heard it said that advocates for rebuilding Runlet were a vocal minority. And I now hear that label being applied to those who won continued discussion about the Beaver Meadow Clubhouse. I remember as a college freshman in 1969, I'm dating myself, when President Nixon, in the face of hundreds of thousands of war protesters, insisted that the silent majority was on his side. Nevertheless, that same year, he began withdrawing troops and not long after, he ended U.S. involvement in that war. It turned out that the silent majority was a fiction and that the vocal minority was in fact the vocal majority. I'm hoping that tonight you will take a different path than the one taken by the school board. A path that leads to goodwill, renewed faith in representative government, and confidence that our marvelous little city is aptly named, not discord, Concord. There are at least two compelling reasons to take that path. One is the numerous letters in the Concord Monitor asking you to do so. The other is the online petition titled "Public Presentation and Input on the Beaver Meadow Clubhouse Project," which calls upon city officials to present the Turner Facility Assessment Report to the public and receive community feedback before proceeding any further. Those letters and, at the moment, 560 signatures on the petition indicate that this is not a vocal minority, quite the opposite. The signers of this petition are not trying to tell you how to vote on the clubhouse. They're only asking you to wait to vote until further discussion takes place and more options are explored. Their request is neither outlandish nor unreasonable, given that over $10 million of taxpayer money is at stake. Once again, I thank you, and I'm leaving with one last thought. My parents taught me many, many valuable lessons. One of them is this: changing your mind for very good reasons is not a sign of weakness, it's a sign of strength and wisdom. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor-elect, city manager, city clerk, and members of the council. My name is Ronald Jewell, average citizen. And I have come to present a variety of things tonight that I hope you'll take into consideration on this major event, an opportunity, an option you all have. Healthy communities have good places to go. They have good things to do. And those things don't necessarily mean that we have to have a resort or something like that to go to every weekend. And I just know from my own experience that I've had a lot of good times and good memories in my share of bad scores at the Beeve. And as it's well known, for the, up until COVID, we, my fraternity always had a golf tournament every year at Pease. And we did so because Pease made it affordable for us to do that. And when COVID struck, we, we disbanded, we haven't got it together. And I'd love to bring it to the Beeve now. But we always have it catered. You know, we have different menus that we can choose from, from different local, you know, providers out there. But here, it seems to me that a lot of events could be catered and you wouldn't have to allocate the space to a big restaurant. And, you know, the other thing is that, you know, people like variety, and these people specialize in, in what they do. And we have a lot of good restaurants in town that cater. And so when we have birthday events or when we have weddings or such, it's kind of like reaching out to the restaurant community here and giving them business and developing informal partnerships with them so that they can thrive on those that show up for these events and pay, pay for use of the facility. Also, on summer days and such, I mean, I mean, it used to be, I mean, I, I've seen, I was, I was quite surprised and really thrilled to see a lunch truck down on Main Street one night. But I was thinking, well, you know, a place like Beaver Meadow, I mean, the culture there, the sort of vibe you get from that place, I mean, it wouldn't be out of, too much audio. And you already have lunch trucks there on, on weekends or the ice cream trucks going through and, you know, create that kind of culture for younger kids too, that don't necessarily want to sit down in a fancy restaurant, which we have plenty of those in Concord. So I, I'm just, let's see, doing this, I wrote over stuff when I was sitting over there, standing over there. I just want to speak a little bit about taxes. Now, as a student of economics and the principles of finance when I was in business school over there at UNH, I witnessed things that happened in our federal government that just But locally here, I'm just going to say, there are elderly people, there are families, young couples, that sit down at their tables every night and try to figure out how they're going to make ends meet. And I have not heard, over the last 20 years, more people tell me in the last six months how their taxes have gone up. Recently, it's not surprising that home sales have declined considerably, and the Director of the Board of Realtors said homes are not affordable. But we all know when you go to the bank to get a mortgage, okay, this used to be, I don't know if it still is, but 35% of your income is all the bank would allow you to use for housing. Well, part of that 35% is what you pay in taxes. So I've been paying, okay, to the point it's painful, and I feel like projects like this, you're asking me to pay even beyond the point of pain. So I just hope the people who, those people that are sitting down at their tables, going over the numbers, going down the panties, okay, they're relying on you folks who they voted for to take them into consideration. So I hope that you will do that, and I appreciate your approach to this meeting tonight and what you've proposed. I hope that goes well, and I wish you continued success in your life and sad to see you go.
Anybody have questions? Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, though.
Hello, members of the council. For the record, I'm Sam Evans Brown. I'm the Chair of Ski the Beev. Never had I imagined that founding a nonprofit to fundraise to make skiing better at Beaver Meadow would get me in front of a room of my community members who maybe are annoyed to hear me up, talking about this subject. So our organization has been trying to improve the skiing facilities at Beaver Meadow now for a number of years. I came to the conclusion that that was necessary after five years of coaching the high school team and seeing the conditions decline at Hayfield, at Memorial Field, where we've been doing most of skiing, and also after watching many a high school student go slowly insane while skiing, many, many laps around Pancake Flat, two-kilometer loop in a hayfield. Beaver Meadow is a very, is a much superior venue for skiing, and I noticed the team has better, higher-quality practices there, and as I've become engaged with BKL, I've also seen the transformative effect of moving the BKL squad to Beaver Meadow that occurred when my compatriot Joe A. moved them there. So I just want to highlight the fact that this is a very high-quality community ski area. It's one that's better than many that you could invest in, and that shouldn't get lost. And I think that will continue to improve as we see the Concord Greenway Trail extend north. I sort of get very excited about the idea that one day you might be able to actually ski downtown if we have enough snow, and I think that that's a really tremendously attractive idea that is the kind of thing that could attract people to our community. I will say that, you know, building a new clubhouse is not the first item on our tick list at Ski the Beev, really is improving the ski facilities that we're looking for, but it is something that would help. Currently, as it stands, when the BKL crew comes to Beaver Meadow, there's not a lot of space indoors. The space that there is indoors is sort of right next to the bar and the driving range, the simulators, not great for really small kids coming indoors. We do see a lot of value in the meeting spaces that are included in the design, but I also would say that if there was a vote that was to kick this back to the committee and a new recommendation would come forward, our organization would be there to raise our hand saying we will help raise money for the grand vision of Beaver Meadow as a community facility. So I simply would say that, you know, for the folks who are putting forth that idea, you know, we hear you. I do want to say, though, I've been a little bit distressed at some of the coverage that I've been reading in the Concord Monitor of late. In particular, I think we should ask ourselves, what are the likely outcomes if we were just to let the building fall in on itself? This is a community facility, it's a community resource, and I think the likely outcomes that we would see if we were to stop investing in Beaver Meadow, or as an article suggested this week, if we were to sell it, what would happen is that a private golf course operator would raise the fees, it would limit accessibility of the course. I don't know if a private golf course operator would want to work with an organization like ours to make skiing available in the winter, and I also think that the other possibility is that if the course were sold, it might cease to be a golf course, it would be developed and not necessarily be open space that's available for recreation anymore. And I think of why I have stuck with this city despite the fact that when we moved here, it was still the city in a coma, and not many 20-somethings were also available for us to hang out with when we first moved here. It was because of the recreational opportunities. Having a place to ski here locally was a very big deal, we decided to say. But that had a piece.
Answer a question?
Sure.
Mr. Evans-Brown, would you leave Cross Country Ski from Grandview Drive in Bo to downtown Concord?
I'm struggling to imagine the route, but...
Did you ski back? No. I got a ride.
Thank you for your testimony. Can you share with the group here tonight how much money Ski the Beev has raised for its operation there?
So we raised $50,000 that was contributed toward the purchase of the groomer that was basically split with the city. The city had money in the capital budget to replace a snowmobile, and we said, please wait, we don't think you need another snowmobile, we'd like something bigger that can break ice. So that was the first quantity. There was extra money that was left in the fund that was set aside for maintenance of the groomer, so I think that brought in $55,000. We subsequently this year have spent about $7,000 to purchase a trailer that's full of skis that we intend to, our hope is to park it in the parking lot and offer them rental-free. We're currently negotiating a contract with the city to try to make that possible. So that brings us to $60-something thousand. You know, my other job is a nonprofit, so I know that's not a whole heck of a lot of money, and certainly would appreciate if anyone has any leads on people who would like to invest in a community skiing facility, I'm looking for those leads.
And we heard you correctly that Ski the Beev would be interested in helping fundraise for additional improvements.
If it were the will of the city council, because of the feedback that they have heard from the community, which I have to say, you know, I hear everything that, I read everything that's written in the Concord Monitor, I hear everything that's said, I understand the concern about the amount of money that a golf clubhouse would cost. If it were the will of the city council to not approve this, and the reason was that you were looking to private entities to fundraise to defray some of the costs, we would be part of that. I would only ask, don't forget about snowmaking, and think of the capital cost of improving that community resource, because there's less and less snow every year.
And last question. And are you aware of any other organizations at Beaver Meadow Golf Course that do independent fundraising for activities there?
I am not as connected to the golf community as I should be. I also have a coworker who's a golfer, which has changed my opinion of the golf community tremendously. It's a much more blue-collar sport than I quite realized, until going for a round with that friend this past spring. And so I am not aware of any entities, but if someone else does, I'd be happy to be connected to them.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Evans-Brown. I guess two things. One is, one question and one comment. If folks want to reach out to the Ski the Beev organization and assist you, donate time, donate dollars or whatever, how can they go about doing that?
So we have a Gmail address, sketobeev603@gmail.com. It's on my phone, I answer it usually. We certainly are looking for board members, and we'll be also looking for volunteer staff to staff the trailer if we manage to come to agreement with the city and sort of the agreement to park there. So certainly would appreciate any help that folks want to give.
Good, thank you. And just the other comment, I guess maybe it's a question as well. If you, and I appreciate Ski the Beev's volunteers to coordinate maybe efforts to raise funds for this, I would assume that to make those efforts the most effective, you would probably want to know exactly what you were raising dollars for, correct?
That would be nice.
That's what I figured. So in other words, it would be helpful for you, for the council to first render a decision, and then you could go about the business of raising the funds and so forth.
I will also say we're happy to be a part of the process, and we had a, not a member, but a sort of someone connected to our circles who's on the ad hoc Beaver Meadow Golf Course Clubhouse Committee, so they were listening to us, which is why there was space for storage, it was included in the design, and we continue to be part of those conversations as the city government is happy to include us.
Thank you. Your Honor. Anyone else? Ever skied downtown before in a snowstorm?
I have, indeed. I skied, I used to ski from, so I used to live right by White Park, and I'd ski from there to the office if there was enough snow.
I did it in my 20s, but I skied to a bar. You can tell this is my last meeting.
I appreciate that. I appreciate being called early, the meter is running on the babysitter at home, so I'm going to run.
Paul's has got babysitters. There you go, right there.
Hello. Thank you all very much. I appreciate everything that the folks are doing because it's very Norman here, and it'll be here a little bit longer. My name is Jessica Wheeler-Russell. I am resident of Ward Two. I did prepare some statements, and I'll read from that. So the project at Beaver Meadow, to me, does raise questions of fiscal responsibility and due diligence, as we do not know what an actual renovation would cost versus a new construction. I think the community is right to review and ask questions about the proposed cost, because even a modest increase in property taxes does become significant, as many homeowners, escalating tax burden has been increasing. I believe the Monitor reported that Concord and Pennequay homeowners have seen about a 7% jump, give or take, considering two and school districts, since 2021. So I've spoken to many of my neighbors in the village and in Concord who tend to have two themes on their minds: how quickly this is being discussed at the end of a term, raising some questions of transparency, and obviously the cost. I understand that it is beneficial to the community to support community-based projects as we have in the past, such as the Riverfront Park project in Pennequay, the investment in Keach Park siteing. However, the cost, considering, you know, those, you know, Keach Park was something, if I recall correctly, about $380,000, correct me if I'm wrong. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
I think it was around $8 million.
$8 million for Keach Park?
He's joking.
Okay, you're all...
Sir!
You just scared me. I was like, whoa!
That was the community, sir.
That was the community, sir. However, the substantial $10 million plus interest earmarked for the clubhouse renovation stands up conspicuously when compared to some of these other projects. The budget has increased, and believe me, I respect the challenges of old buildings, many municipal bodies, and school districts are struggling with that for now, so... However, it still is alarming with the impending costs highlighted by the Human Services Director citing costs for service demand, escalating housing costs, or the police department facing increased expenses. So I will just keep this short, and I will ask the council to please suspend this proposal for now, and instead take the time to call city staff to explore other avenues for cost reduction, such as private fundraising, a public or something like a public-private partnership, cost-effective alternatives to proposal plans, such as renovating these existing structures and comparing that cost to a new construction. I would also ask that the council conduct more listening sessions to allow the stakeholders, residents in Concord, those of us in the neighborhood of Beaver Meadow, like myself, to weigh in on this proposed new floor plan, given the changes from the original scope of the project, and once an accurate estimate of cost to renovate the building is obtained, also present that as a community listening session. So that's what I have to say. I'll be happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Go in the back, way back.
My name is Doug Lee. I'm in Ward Five, and my son, he played at the golf course. He's gotten the proposal, he went through the proposal. He's an architect student over at Norwich. As we were talking, everyone is talking about they want to see another plan, they want to see what it looks like with addition. Why are we not, as a community, using our resources, like NHDI, who has the architecture department? We could go to Norwich, they have architecture departments. My son is willing to draw it for free. Why are we paying $490,000 to have these firms draw these, when we don't even know what we really want to start out with? So I'm looking at the plans, $10 million is ridiculous. We should never pay that much money for a golf course that has 415 members. What I'm proposing is we renovate it. According to the studies that was given, the building is sound, it can be renovated. You can add on to it if you want a bigger room. There's no need to spend $10 million. We can spend that $10 million elsewhere in the community. Our athletic fields are, as one gentleman earlier said, we are the capital C. Our athletic fields are a joke. We have the worst athletic fields, or among the worst athletic fields, in the entire state. And I would rather see that money be spent for those athletic fields. We're going to spend that money. We can renovate this a couple million dollars and spend the money elsewhere. We don't need to spend $10 million on a golf club so someone can have a drink and overlook the golf course. As far as saving energy, there's a 2030 challenge. My son, who's sitting back in the back in the Norwich here, he explained all that. It's using daylighting, and as I said, he's willing to draw this for free. He said he can do it in a few days. So if we can meet with the golf, the people in charge of the golf course, they can come up with the idea, we can draw it. So instead of us spending all this money for all these firms, why don't we use our resources we have, instead of wasting taxpayer money?
Thank you very much. Questions? Appreciate you coming out to me. Thank you for your patience. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I didn't want to testify tonight, so I sent an email, asked for it to be part of the public record, but it didn't get in, which is fine. I'm sure you've got tons and tons of emails, so I'm just going to read it so it can go into the public record. Sorry. My name is Jessica Livingston. I'm a Concord resident for a long time, and I love this community, as many of you know. I'm all about community building. So to start off, I'd like to say that I'm not against golf or the golf course. I don't play, but I play any sports. It's just not a sports person. But I do appreciate the recreational opportunity that people enjoy playing golf, and I love that about Concord, that having a variety of creation options is one of the great things about Concord. Although I don't personally utilize it, I know that many residents and families do, and that's great, and I support that 1,000%. For a long time, I've been concerned and confused as to the spending on the golf course and the bigger picture. It seems like the golf course gets a lot of attention, but yet trying to get answers about its revenue versus expenses, does it make a profit? Does it go into the general fund or the golf fund, et cetera? I hear different things from different people all the time, and it's just very unclear to myself and many members of the community. Last week, a decision was finally made on the middle school location, which has locked us taxpayers into $170-ish million. We need a new police station, as we discussed earlier tonight. The police are constantly asking for more money for retention, public safety, and then we also heard tonight that General Services is looking for more money for retention. We have housing prices... I know that's been an argument tonight that many people do use it, but I could argue that point, that it's still not accessible to all people. And it also kind of slapped in the face when there are groups like Friends of White Park who have had to do countless fundraisers, like Fleming was in yards and ugly sweater runs just to have a playground that is safe and accessible for children and their caretakers. Or that change for Concord has been asking since 2018 for lights at Keach Park soccer field, so children in the most diverse neighborhood would have a safe place to play. Other groups like the skate park in White Park Skate House, the Nirmac Lodge, and as we heard tonight, Skeetabeeves have done their own work in fundraising, yet the golf course, which may or may not make a profit each year, that's still a question in our minds. And it still benefits a small few who can afford to access it. Gets to have taxpayers funded clubhouse without having to do any of their own fundraising. As the discussion has ensued over the last few months, supporters of the clubhouse have started referring to it as a community center. Yet it doesn't fit the criteria for funding as a community center. And additionally, the citywide community center that we have isn't even accessible to all people, which is a whole other conversation that we've had many times. Hosting private rental events at the golf course doesn't meet the community center. And more recently, some people have even started referring to the membership as the season passed. Whatever you call it, it's still inaccessible to many. There is already a distrust of city government and the feeling of it doesn't matter, they'll do whatever they want anyway, especially after the school voted this week against the will of the people. I've read the many, many comments, letters to the editor, my turn pieces, and public testimony regarding the issue. It's clear that the majority of Concord residents either don't want to spend $10 million at all, or want more time, discussion, opportunity for input and transparency. I've also heard that people in that neighborhood want a community center in their neighborhood. I do support that. In the monitor yesterday, there was an op-ed by Jennifer Frizzell, which offered the suggestion of a committee and a public-private partnership. The original small ad hoc committee for the clubhouse did their job as directed, but perhaps a broader committee with a broader charge would be a better option. A committee tasked with not only fundraising, but convening more community members to create an idea for an actual community center or building that will qualify for grant funding, which gives it credence and truly benefit more of the community. I would be in favor of this because, like I said, I support community spaces, I support recreation. But the building proposal as it is, still doesn't seem like it's gonna be an actual community center. But more importantly, I am in favor of letting the new council come in and consider all of the needs of this community, and let them set the priorities before making their decision on this $10 million expenditure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Back.
Hi. My name is Roger Jobin. I live in Ward Four. I first started using Beaver Meadow in 1960 when I was 12 years old. I've had a long time association with the Beaver Meadow facility. Thing that I look at is, despite being a public park, it's probably the only city operation that, to my knowledge, this year, we're gonna bring in somewhere around $1.9 million in revenue from people using the golf course. If we're gonna run a business, if we're gonna try to do the best we can at that business, we need to upgrade the infrastructure from mid-20th century up into the 21st century. I support the replacement of the course, and I think that in the long run, it'll show that it was, it was a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Buddy. Love you.
Hello. Thank you. I'm new to Concord. My name is Lisa Bivin. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all tonight. I live in Ward Four. I'm going to share some statistics on golf and some demographics and compare them, demographics on Concord, to shed some light on why I think that there is equity and cost burden implications for the $10 million project. So according to the data, about 25 million people play golf each year. That's a mere 8% of the United States population. The median age of a golfer is 54 years old. So 77% of people who play golf are male. That's an obvious, small proportion of the population in terms of looking at equity, About 22% of, 22% of Concord's population are 18 to 34-year-olds. So we're looking at about 787 residents in this age group who statistically would be playing golf in Concord at the be. But according to the Fed's median net worth of this age group, somehow or another, whether due to school debt or what have you, their median net worth is about $13,900, according to the Feds. That's a cost burden on a group of people who don't really use much in the way of golf. So let's compare that to people over 55 in Concord. That's about 13,973 residents. If we're going on 8%, that's 1,150 of them. The Feds report that the median net worth for people over the age of 54 is somewhere between $212,500 to $266,000 median net worth. That's 15 times more than the under 35 crowd. That seems a little unfair. Sorry, I'm a little nervous tonight. Sitting here for all those low-income moms like my mom when I was a little girl, who couldn't be adhering like this because she was crawling her way out of poverty and trying to earn herself a high school diploma, and then eventually a master's degree over the course of time. If she had had the information and the resources to be at a meeting like this as a low-income mom scrambling to get herself out, she would have said, please think about the needs of families like mine when you're thinking about how best to allocate $10 million bond in tax dollars. The athletic fields would be for all students, and that would be 100% equity investment for the city of Concord, or any of the multitudes of other ways in which a bond could be issued. I know that there are all sorts of ways to spend the money, but I'm just gonna highlight one need: paraprofessionals in Concord, home care providers for people with disabilities, people with disabilities themselves who want to live independently, the direct support professionals who provide support for people with disabilities who live community-based lives. These are all people who cannot afford to go to a golf course and can no longer afford to live in Concord. And I'll just back that up with a little piece of data from New Hampshire Fiscal Policy Institute. Concord now has the fifth worst ratio of jobs to housing units. That is, jobs to housing unit ratio is so severe that workers have to live outside of Concord now in order to be able to keep their jobs in Concord because they can no longer afford it. So Concord has a severe lack of affordable housing, but there also isn't enough workforce housing. And I have to wonder, surely it must be more important for Concord to invest in affordable and workforce housing than in a golf course? Or a bond for a golf course? The cost burden of this project falls disproportionately onto younger people and their families, renters, and overall people who will never access the golf course. People whose median net worth is considerably less than the median net worth of golfers. This is a wildly inequitable allocation of scant taxpayer dollars, which benefits largely, honestly, privileged white people at the expense of failing to meet the needs and wants for the greater public good and well-being. The needs of the, of the many outweigh the needs of the few, especially the few who are able to organize public-private fundraisers to pay for such an extraordinary resource, which I know that it is. And I'd be happy to sit on such a public-private fundraising committee. So golfers will always have a place to golf, but there are people right here in Concord who need housing today and are unhoused. And there are so many other needs. I just happened to have picked that one tonight. I want to live in a Concord, Concord where the city council says an enthusiastic yes to a, to a bond for $10 million for affordable housing, and I still believe in the renovation of the golf course, just not in a, in a $10 million-plus dollar expense. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so we've been going for about an hour and a half, and, so we've been going for about an hour and a half, we've heard some really good testimony tonight. As I said, I'm gonna ask for them to recess it, so you can, so you can come back and share what, if the community comes back with whatever they come back with. But we'll stay as long as you want to keep speaking. I just hope that you don't repeat something that somebody said prior to you. That's all, just take that consideration. Mr. Russell.
Justice Russell, Concord. First, I'd like to say, those that are leaving, thanks for your service. It's not an easy job, and you get the tough decisions, and I'm sure I've been on both sides of the issues. I haven't been up here as much as Mr. Swiker, but I take my hat off in the interest of democracy for your serving the role and for those of you staying on. So I appreciate that, and I'll say my piece now. I'm sure you know I have plenty of questions, and, and I guess I won't talk about questions. I'll talk about my search for answers. August 16th, I went to the presentation of Beaver Meadow Golf Course, and I said to myself, you're just gonna listen, you're not gonna ask any questions. And so I saw a presentation, and I heard a quote from the builders and the architects, and I think Mr. Lebrun was there and the committee was there. And somebody asked a question, what's it gonna cost? Well, we don't know. We don't know. And then the next question was, well, you know, the size, how much per square foot? Well, we won't know till September 30th. So I said, all right, let's wait till September 30th. And September 30th comes and goes, and we have this great election campaign going on, lots of people running, lots of issues, lots of discussions, and not a, not a, not a word about what the cost of the golf course, the clubhouse is going to be. And then we have record turnout, I did election coverage, I'm into elections, as you know. And what happens? Right after the election, we got a $10 million golf course. So who knew what, when? So I decided we ought to start looking into who knew what, when, and why the information wasn't made public, so it could have been made part of this whole debate. And so I went over to C-Hall, and I said, I'd look, I'd like to look at the file on Beaver Meadow. And 91A says you can go over there in business hours, and you can look at the file. And, well, I'm sorry, the file's not available. Well, I was given a bid report here, and thank you, Mr. Lebrun, it was very helpful. And this was January 5th, this was the bid from H.L. Turner. And in that report, in a letter, December 9th, 2022, one of the questions received from the bidders, is there a rough construction budget in square foot is they're anticipating for the project? And it mentions it's a $4,500 square, $4,500 square foot. And then, this is the city's answer, it is anticipated the completed facility will be 12,000 to 15,000 square feet, excluding parking lots, walkways. Given the inflation of macroeconomic conditions, the city recognizes the construction project budget for $4.511 million might be insufficient, given the city's vision for that project. And this letter was a month before they put together the ad hoc committee. So somebody had already decided what it's gonna cost, how big it's gonna be. And then there's another letter, December 16th, where, from the Purchasing Division, will the construction manager be on board to help with the opinion of cost? Yes, the CM will come on board as soon as the design team was selected. So I asked, when did we know what about when? And I got a letter back, I went over the next day with a right-to-know request, let's find out what was going on when. So I got a letter back from Mr. Lebrun saying, oh, all this stuff is online, and then says it's gonna take 30 to 45 days for us to get this information. Well, it shouldn't just be a file, probably this big, maybe even bigger. So fortunately, I did get something today. So I have an H.L. Turner Group, let's see, August 16th, we're gonna know something, September 30th. September 13th, H.L. Turner Group, new facility option one, project cost, and it goes down the list, and on page two, this was a three-story building, $14,045,7 million. Why wasn't the public told that? Well, wait a minute, the golf course, no, the New Hampshire Golf Course bailed out. It's no longer gonna be three stories. So on October 30th, H.L. Turner come down with a new bid, $10.767. But this is the same H.L. Turner when they were hired by Ball to say, tell us what it's gonna cost for our community center. And six months later, within the paper within the last month, they say it's gonna cost $13 million for a new community center. If we just do a renovation, it's gonna cost a lesser amount. And guess what? If we just do a renovation with addition, it's gonna be a lesser amount. So within six months of Turner being involved with that, so I want to know through my right-to-know request, when did they know, and why wasn't it put out, so that this public could have a debate about what was going on? Transparency is a word that's thrown around. This isn't very transparent. I'm trying to pull teeth writing right-to-know requests. Thank God I'm an attorney, I don't have to run out and pay somebody to do it. But let's get the truth out there. We got, we got an ad hoc committee that was appointed after they were already told us 15,000 square feet. And then we have a committee that's already out there. We have an ordinance committee that was replaced by the ad hoc committee. 3318 Golf Course Advisory Committee, it was an ordinance from 19, uh, 1912. 2012, the committee shall submit annual reports to the city council on the state of the golf course, shall initiate and update five-year needs and improvements for the course, recommend to the city council proposed fees, and recommend to the city manager changes that will result in improvements to all aspects in the use, maintenance, and upkeep of the golf course. Why did we create another committee? Why do we create another committee when we already had a committee? And if we're gonna recess this, and we're gonna send it back to the committee, let's send it to a legally created committee that has that mission. Let's not put a bunch of golfers and Tom Kroto, who doesn't golf, God bless him. But, you know, and then questions are asked, how many people here golf? We can't ask you questions. How many people golf? Well, I wanted to ask those questions, and other people have asked those questions, but I think before any vote goes on on this, the people of this community need to know who the golfers are. That's all I have to say. If there's any questions, thank you.
Anybody have questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. My name is Jim Silly. I'm actually from Belmont, New Hampshire. I'm a former member-
to the city council proposed fees, and recommend to the city manager changes that will result in improvements to all aspects in the use, maintenance, and upkeep of the golf course. Why did we create another committee? Why do we create another committee when we already had a committee? And if we're going to recess this, and we're going to send it back to the committee, let's send it to a legally created committee that has that mission. Let's not put a bunch of golfers and Tom Croto, who doesn't golf, God bless him. But, you know, and then questions are asked, how many people here golf? Who can't ask you questions? How many people golf? Well, I wanted to ask those questions, and other people have asked those questions. But I think before any vote goes on on this, the people of this community need to know who the golfers are. That's all I have to say. If there's any questions, thank you.
Anybody have questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight. My name is Jim Silly. I'm actually from Belmont, New Hampshire. I'm a former member of Beaver Meadow and a former Concord resident. I wrote some stuff down so I wouldn't forget some of the things I wanted to say. I grew up loving Beaver Meadow. When I was a kid, my dad worked for the state, and he played the league at the Beaver. And my mom would get out of work and drive me and my brother from our house in Belmont, drop us off here, and I would either cack for my dad during his league nights or get to utilize the facility and learn all the aspects of what being a golfer and really the qualities that it brings to life is about. At the same time, I was a junior member of Laconia Country Club, but I always wished I lived closer, like I spent more time at Beaver Meadow, because it felt like a place where I belonged and a place where I wasn't just a nuisance. Laconia Country is, the country club's a private golf club. And that's kind of the joke there about being a nuisance is that I was a kid, and I wasn't, you know, one of them. So some of the best juniors in the state have come out of Beaver Meadow. Some have been state residents, some have traveled from all corners of the state. I actually believe that one of the current best juniors in the state lives in New West, which is a member of Beaver Meadow because of the facility. But I'm here because I was told about the vote for the new clubhouse, and there's a need to build a new clubhouse now. It makes sense on a ton of different levels that you actually would pass this vote. First, my professional background is that of a real estate broker. And from a pure real estate perspective, it was kind of a no-brainer. The current building is in dire straits. I've been there quite a few times, and I have seen the condition of the structure. I know it's going to need to be addressed one way or another. If you renovate the existing structure, it would just be a form of a Band-Aid. It would kind of be like putting lipstick on a pig. At the end of the day, you're just covering up the bigger issues to try to cut corners of the cost. While building new would cost more than renovating, delaying would cost even more in the long run, and typically you would lose features due to the delay. There are many examples to choose from, but one that I have a great knowledge of is actually from my time in Belmont when I was growing up. They were trying to build a new high school in the early 90s. First attempt was shot down by the public by three votes. The first attempt had an auditorium, it had a swimming pool, it had a bunch of things that were in the original plan. It lost by three votes. Three or four years later, when the facility was finally passed, it was a shell of the original design and was passed for the same amount of money as the original design. My point is, it's known that it needs to be done, and delaying will just cost more money in the future, and you'll most likely get less for the structure. A new facility would create higher value to all the residential real estate and the facility of the club as well. My understanding is that there'll be more parking with modern indoor drainage and grading, and that will surely have less of intrusion to the neighboring properties. Quite a few of the larger charitable golf outings at the course those yearly provides thousands of dollars in aid to quite a few charities. Also bring a lot of people and difficulty with parking, and cars are parked on the side of the road right now. The building would handle that and certainly less stress the neighboring property. Next, from a practical level, the current clubhouse is old and has needed serious attention. A new facility would enhance the property, not just from a golfing perspective, but a practical one. Building a structure such as the one presented to you will increase the use of the property into a four-season destination. City members could utilize it as a gathering place for ice skating, cross-country skiing, along with the use of the four indoor golf simulators, which would provide revenue as well. All facets of the building would increase revenue all year long. With upgraded kitchen and dining space, a restaurant could become a destination facility as well. It increases use. This could be a crown jewel of the city and could be a year-round attraction. I would also point to other municipalities that have built facilities in the state and what it's done for a significant uptick in revenue and use for those city residents. You can look at Peas in Portsmouth and Dairy Field in Manchester, just for a couple of examples. Doesn't get lost to me that golf is notoriously considered an old, rich, white, male sport that is too expensive and too stuffy for everyone. We just heard that tonight. I can see where the building, the new clubhouse, would upset some people who don't play the sport or feel that it provides a benefit to them. Based on perception, one could say golf is a divisive sport. And those that say that were probably right 20 to 30 years ago. Tiger Woods, who has a side note, grew up at a physical course in California, came along in 1997, a biracial American, and won the Masters, and that changed that almost overnight. The game grew, it's continued to grow. Programs were born to drive more players to the game, including the first T program, the PGA Junior League, the New Hampshire Golf Association's Junior Tour, the Drive, Tip and Putt Tournament, United States Golf Association governs golf in the United States, and their sole focus is to continue to grow the game. At the heart of that has been multiple golf courses. Munities help provide safe, cost-effective, and welcoming facilities for people of all levels to enjoy the game. When beer golf is an old, rich, white male sport and is divisive, I would point out to it being one of the only activities you can start at five years old and play until you're 90-plus, if you're blessed to live that long. It's the only game you can play where you can have a female, a child, a senior, and a middle-aged man in the same group. Beaver Meadow has historically been a melting pot of ethnic diversity as well. A new clubhouse would just accentuate and bring all of those people together more often and more frequently. Golf is not a divisive sport. It's inclusive. It brings people together. Beaver Meadow brings people together. I'm no longer a member of Beaver Meadow, as I belong to a club closer to my house, but I can tell you this, Beaver Meadow always feels like home to me. When I come to Beaver Meadow, it's always the people, the staff, the golf professionals, and the community atmosphere that reminds me of what I miss. The Beaver needs a new clubhouse. It will bring people together in many ways. It will provide value and four-season use. It will increase market value to property in the neighboring area. I just heard you guys do the right thing and invest in the future of Beaver Meadow and the city of Concord.
Thank you. Any questions? Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Come back.
Evening, welcome. Hi there, I'm Margaret Fletcher. I'm from Ward 7. I haven't heard any discussion tonight about the carbon footprint of this endeavor. And I love that this, that this facility exists in our city. I love hearing that it's encumbered for recreation. The carbon footprint of a typical golf course is about 10 times the average carbon footprint for other outdoor recreational uses. So when I, when I listened through the, the presentation that was made for the, you know, to, to tell us about the, the costs and look at the performance, I saw a lot of dollars, but I didn't see anything about the, the carbon cost. And I feel like we need to be thinking about our children and our grandchildren every time we make a big decision like this. So we're talking about, you know, continuing to allow golfing to happen, cross-country skiing to happen. I think that's wonderful. And could we ask that the, the carbon cost, or rather, the, the cost to bring this to a carbon-neutral footprint be included in the total cost? So this is why I'm up here right now. I really wanted to look you all in the face and ask you to think about what your child, what your grandchild is going to, you know, ask you in 20 years when this thing has been paid for, if the bond goes through. You know, how did you vote on that? And did you think about the chemicals that are going into the lawn? Did you think about the gas that it takes to, you know, to burn to keep the, the grass short? Did you, did you think about the water use? COP28 is going on right now. You all have seen that in the news. We can't afford to burn one extra unit of fossil fuels for a recreation, a recreational facility that we've heard just doesn't provide the kind of equity that I think our city really deserves. So what I would ask is that the, you know, the cost of bringing the project to carbon neutrality be part of the presentation next time it comes around for us to look at. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anywhere with questions? Welcome back.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Visto Nadjimier. I live in Ward 1. And first, I would like to say that this night is a great day, or a great night for me, because it reminded me the first day I sat here talking to y'all with my mentor, who's going to live in Houston, who's here tonight. And last night, I'm going to be talking to the mayor, the current mayor, which is great. And I would like to see a smile on your, come on.
I am smiling at you, so.
And also, that there's a lot of people that got involved after that, like Sharm, who's here tonight, and I hope she can speak after this so she can go to have kids. But I'm just going to go ahead and start my presentation of me, of testimony tonight. Thank you for providing this time. I've been involved in learning about this project, meeting with many of the city council and Concord residents, and edging myself about the proposed clubhouse construction. After much thought and long and careful consideration, I have come to the conclusion that this project needs to be left behind because it's not yet ready. It's not, it's not ready yet, and it is not the right time to discuss investment and construction of a clubhouse. Despite the proposal being rushed, I believe this period of time should be dedicated to acknowledge the work of our existing council and welcoming our new council members, ensuring, ensuring they feel comfortable, supported, and ready to take on their roles. However, it is disappointing that instead of focusing on this transition, we are discussing an investment of $10.3 million taxpayers' dollars into a clubhouse. This is a big number and needs to carefully consider, needs to, to carefully consideration and discussion. Given the opportunity to voice our opinions, two keys, two key issues come to mind, accessibility and cost. We're being told that there is no other way. The renovation is possible for existing clubhouse. I have seen, even today, its poor, its poor condition, which I believe is a direct result of poor management. And now residents are to pay for the cost. We're being told that there is no other options to lower the cost, and the only way, the only solution to build a new, the only solution is to build a new $10 million, $1 million clubhouse, a cost that will eventually go up. I strongly believe that we need to pause this project before it's too late. This will allow the committee, city employees, and the new incoming council enough time to explore the right path, consider direct funding, consider different funding options, and ensure that the project is in best interest of the community. Some question, some of you my question, if we can't start a $10.3 million project, how will the city ever fund any large-scale projects in the future? However, we need to consider the nature of the project. The city is investing it. In my opinion, the clubhouse is not the right investment for such an amount. This brings me to my second point, accessibility. Accessibility is a question that everybody has been questioning. It's something that everybody has questioned, and have been told that the new clubhouse will function as a community center. But that is, but what is a community center? A diverse community, a conflict. A community center should be a space that welcomes people from different, excuse me, welcomes, uh, different, uh, different people from different backgrounds, culture, beliefs, and different needs. It should provide cultural dance training space, learning skills, cultural art, different kinds of sports, educational resources, a library of cultural studies and languages, leadership training courses, business training, computer labs, job opportunities, meeting rooms, student space, coffee shop, and restaurants, offering food from different places, different countries. I would like to be full at the community center. Well, I think also that we should also provide a space that would be a more, like multiple space for, multiple purpose, space for special events. I would like to have my wedding here. Have you all come to it? A clubhouse does not meet this criteria. It does not provide the necessary resources or space to serve the diverse needs of our community. We need to prioritize our community and provide what they need. We need to address issues like homelessness, affordable housing, public transportation, and improving our relationship with the law enforcement, especially for marginalized communities. You have approved the budget for Keystark Soccer Field, like, we've seen check for Concord come here many times since 2017. I still have records about that. The project that needs prioritizing at this, as it is, as it has been ongoing for a long time, and it's not even included in the agenda. Our current community center needs to be more accessible and free for residents. This is where we need to start in addressing the, the need of our community, especially for the incoming city council and the new mayor. I look forward to work with you. Lastly, I want to reorganize the mayor and the city council for their work. This is special for me, because I'm going to rewatch again and rewatch again saying this. Let me repeat this. Lastly, I want to reorganize the mayor and the city council for their work. I have been using this quote for a while, and I feel it fits this moment. No matter how good a dancer is, a good dancer always knows the right time to leave the stage. No matter how a good dancer is, always leave the stage the right time. I think you did that.
I'm still dancing, brother.
The mayor has done an excellent job building the ministry. It has been a challenging project, but he has delivered. Things might not always work out, and people might sometimes disagree, and it's always going popping, especially in positions of, positions of leadership, whether you like it or not. But no, but to be honest with you, I have seen the mayor work with everyone, whether it was the council or residents, making everyone feel welcome. I believe he has left a beautiful, unforgettable legacy, and I would want him and the council to celebrate and pass it on to the next council, to take on their responsibilities. This proposal of building a clubhouse needs to be left behind because it's not ready yet. I want to thank residents of our community for their involvement in this project, this process. This is democracy, and I encourage you to keep doing this. It's my first time seeing a lot of people like this tonight. But thank you all. I appreciate you. Last, first time I spoke to you, nobody understood what I was saying because my English is still poor, but I'm doing that, right? Love you all. I can't take questions now.
Thank you, Stan. Go with you, brother. Go with you, brother.
Welcome.
My name is Andy Lane, I'm in, uh, Ward Three, and, uh, wasn't my original intent to speak, a couple of things I have not heard that I wanted to point out. The revenue of one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in non-topic events, I assume, were related to golf outings, various forms. Um, I'm not happy to know that the city is looking to compete with businesses in having a restaurant or wedding events at Beaver Meadow. We have several businesses here in town, if you start taking away weddings from them, that will hurt them, they're paying taxes on that location. I live near Beaver Meadow, so I hear the event at night over there. I hear the fireworks. Now, I'm a combat veteran, and so when I hear fireworks go off outside the normal venue of Fourth of July, I get shaped. And so I think the city should, that's a certain issue, but, you know, there should be some consideration given to our veterans of the city. The other thing is that the, it's been reported that it was a polling site, it is no longer a polling site, in the school when they built Beaver Meadow, it was slated to be a polling site, and that was part of the argument for building where they did. I like, I did like the idea, uh, someone mentioned of having catering do the business there at the Beaver Meadow, I do, I think that's a great idea, to invest in a commercial-grade restaurant, uh, just that equipment alone and the upkeep will fall on the city repeatedly. One last thing I wanted to point out was the safety on the roadway in and out of Beaver Meadow, Beaver Meadow Way or Road, I believe it's called. Because I, I also was interested in the, uh, barn on Bull Meadows when they built over there, and they were required to put in a larger driveway, one that would take two fire trucks widths, of two fire trucks. You're not getting two fire trucks down Beaver Meadow Road, that's a single road, single exit. You do not have a clear view of that roadway when you turn in there. Having, uh, the engineering folks should, uh, take that into consideration when they, uh, do a redesign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lane, it's always good to see you. I want to assure you that, um, the fireworks, there was an end a couple of years ago that had fireworks, they were permitted through the city to operate, and that was the last time it happened because it was so impactful to the neighborhoods. So if what you're hearing are fireworks, two summers ago, I, I believe it was two summers ago, but at the golf course, they're not permitted, there are other areas in the neighborhoods that are running fireworks, but not the firework display that you're talking about, but, um, I fully appreciate where you're coming from because you're not the only one in our neighborhood that talks about fireworks. Yep, uh, but veterans, I mean specifically veterans that have concerns about fireworks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Hesley, working his way up here, are you good? Welcome.
All city council members, following up against my own personal opinion as resident of Pennecook, my name is Devon Rodrick, I'm in Ward One. I appreciate your ability pledging to motion for recess on this item. I look forward to all the members of the city council passing that motion and allowing next year's council to take that up. That being said, why is the city council even considering to spend ten point three million dollars on a new golf clubhouse that doesn't even meet the standards of the CDFA for community center? The property tax burden that this project has placed upon every single resident, most of whom don't use the golf course, is unjustifiable. Per the Concord Monitor, when revenue from the golf course does not meet expenses, taxes have been used to pay for the golf course operations. Is that not enough to ask us? This debt won't go away until after my children have graduated college. Every year is a question of whether or not existing city pools for children will be open to staffing concerns. Bulk leaf election in Pennecook was delayed due to staffing, and it was, if it wasn't for the weather, it would not be happening. The Christmas parade can't be rescheduled due to police staffing. Snow plowing, as we heard earlier, will be delayed, even though it's actively being worked on. The ambulance at Manor Station was taken away for months, and staffing at the fire department is still a problem. There is a homeless-driven crime problem plaguing the city, including drug use, assault, arson, and murder, and you are not doing enough to stop it. I found a used needle on the edge of my property along Manor Road on December third. I want to know how building a new golf clubhouse will make this community safer. There are other more pressing issues than this. I want a safer city to raise my children in, in the ten point three million dollar clubhouse, and that will do absolutely nothing to help with that. Thank you.
Dolph is back.
Yeah, you're on the edge.
I must be stretching here. Good evening, my name is Ellen Hershberg. Let me get this. So, I could testify this evening that until four years ago, the golf course did minimal grooming for cross-country skiing. Minimal, I mean they would make one class with a snowmobile and tracks at her. Then once a week, no grooming for skating, it was rare grooming with a car more than once a week if at all. The pattern of non-grooming would occur, we've been patent for non-grooming, it started about nineteen eighty-nine, when the golf course took over grooming, no place to hold school practices, and no place to hold straight. In fact, the first race of what is now called the New Hampshire Culture Series, a race that now attracts upward of seven hundred middle school and high school seniors, was hosted by Concord High School. But because the golf course would not commit to grooming, Concord High School's hosting school moved the race to Pembroke, where they went out of their way to accommodate us. I could testify this evening why the golf course has resumed grooming for the past four years after thirty-year lapse. Is it because in twenty nineteen, there was discussion about renovating or replacing the current clubhouse? Knowing that the cost to repair or replace the clubhouse for golfers may not have been received well by the community, and kicking off a push to rebrand the golf course as a year-round recreational meeting facility. I could testify this evening that a skating pond was added to the golf course prior to the restart of grooming for seniors. The community was told that the removal of trees, not the most recent cutting, would pay for the costs of constructing a pond. Unfortunately for the taxpayers over city, the revenue for lumber from the trees did not even come close to covering the cost of the new pond. And I could testify that in twenty eighteen, the council stated that if the golf course did not have to pay an administrative fee to the city, the court would be able to pay for their expenses. Unfortunately, this was not true. As stated in a report from the finance director, the golf course still would have been tens of thousands of dollars in red. This loss doesn't include costs associated with bond payments for golf course improvements. Of course, that was shifted from the golf bonds, from golf bonds in twenty eighteen to general obligation bonds, city bonds, in twenty nineteen, bonds that are now being paid for with our property taxes. But instead, I will testify concerning comments members of the council have made, that there has been plenty of time for the community to comment. While there have been reports and discussions from the ad hoc committee and the council about improvements to the golf clubhouse, it wasn't until earlier this year, when the second ad hoc clubhouse committee was formed, the public had, that the public had an opportunity to have their voices heard. Here's the catch: what the community has been allowed to comment on is a very different project than the, than the one that is before you tonight. Not a project for four point nine million dollars, but one for ten point eight million, with a proposed bond for ten point three million. And while the community members can't comment tonight on the current plan, what you are voting on, what you had planned to vote on, is funding for a project the community has barely had time to see, a project that until this evening, we have not had the opportunity to comment on. The project you are considering funding this evening is an entirely different project. The project the community commented on was three stories, a main floor for golf and associated activities, and upper floor to be leased and generate revenue to assist in paying the bond for the clubhouse, and a lower level for storage and importantly, for cross-country skiing. And the community was led to understand that the costs listed in the CIP, the clubhouse and the repair and repaving of the parking lot, would be bonded for less than five million dollars. Over a period of a few short years, we have seen the working capital fund grow to over seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars, while the clubhouse, sewer line, and parking lot are continuing to deteriorate. It is beyond comprehension, this fund hasn't been used to address at least some of these issues. Should maintenance issues that need to be addressed, regardless of any improvement or replacement for the clubhouse, have been funded? When we are told the golf course is showing a profit, does this include all expenses and all ba- all bond payments, or does it only account for day-to-day operating expenses? When the golf course makes a transfer out, what is that money used for? Why did members of the city council make comments at the previous city council meeting, comments to the press, that there has been plenty of time to comment on the most recent plan of this project, when we know that isn't true? I hope that, I hope the city council is willing to consider the same process the ad hoc clubhouse committee instituted for the previous proposal, and I hope this isn't a last hurrah for those who are leaving the council, or one more line to be filled out on an already, already long resume. The question the council should be asking themselves is should this meeting for approving funding be the only opportunity for public testimony? The mayor has proposed that after all public testimony is heard at a future date, the council at that time should approve a motion to send this back to the ad hoc committee, to send it back to the ad hoc committee, to have public input on the revised clubhouse plans, and to allow the public to have input on the costs associated with this project. It should be the move that the council follows through on. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to testify this evening.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, city council members. Um, I'm Steve Wett from Ward Five in Concord, and I'm grateful that, actually, I'm going so late, because in keeping with your direction, I'm not going to talk about things that other people had, and that really just tastes care whole lot.
I saw you here, you talked about your vacation in the river, but so I didn't.
I'm not gonna do this. I commend you, Mayor, for giving us more time to discuss this and putting it off to another meeting. I would ask that the eventual vote be taken by the new council member, uh, new council members, and you as mayor, Mr. Campbell. And I won't go into the compliments that everyone else has given to you on your, the great things that you've accomplished, I share them. I'm concerned about something that has only slightly been, um, referred to. I'm concerned about the city competing with other businesses in the area. I don't know much about golf. I rely on friends of mine who do golf, and I've settled, one of which, who's been a former Concord resident, and has played, as he puts it, many of the top one hundred courses in the United States, many courses in New England, and has played Beaver Meadow many times, told me that clubhouses reflect the character of the courses. He also said that Beaver Meadows clubhouse, current clubhouse, nicely reflects the character of the course. And as you heard from the gentleman from Laconia, he fell in love with a course that had a simple clubhouse, not an extensive clubhouse. After all, this is a public course, and as I understand, public courses tend to be simpler, have simpler facilities than a private course. If somebody wants a private course, there are several in the area, um, and, um, the Concord Country Club revenue supports the tax base. Pembroke Pines, I guess, is in Pembroke and doesn't, but, uh, if somebody wants a, a private-level course with an extensive clubhouse, Pembroke Pines has just built a brand-new one. And we all know what Concord Country Club is like. So, I wonder whether we ought to be in the business of competing with golf courses that have those great facilities when we just have a municipal course, a relatively simple course? I'm concerned about, um, the gentleman from the ad hoc committee, Tom, he talked about this great restaurant. Well, if we're building a great restaurant and supported with municipal funds, why should someone, um, want to compete with us who wants to open a restaurant on Fisherville Road when they have a taxpayer-supported restaurant down the road? Doesn't sound like that supports a tax base when we want to encourage businesses to, to, to settle here. And it seems like we would want tired and hot and hungry golfers to head down Fisherville Road to use the businesses there, rather to use, uh, that would build our tax base and support local business, rather than have a taxpayer-supported, uh, great restaurant that could be taking business away from others. Likewise, why are we building a facility that would have banquet and wedding space when there are already businesses that make that around? We shouldn't be competing with them, we should be encouraging new businesses to settle if in fact there's still few of them that people are having a hard time finding them. So, I think we ought to seriously think about whether we ought to be in the business of competing with businesses around. I also heard that, um, obviously proponents envision the possibility of a new clubhouse being used as a community center. I don't know what the definition of a community center is, but the ones that I've seen have gyms and things like that, I don't see any gyms in the plans for this one, for this clubhouse. So, I wonder whether we need a complete new design at the cost of I don't know how much in order to make this into a clubhouse, and to a community center as well as a clubhouse. So those are some of the questions that I've been thinking about, and, um, again, I ask you to wait on voting for this, for the council to come in. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hi. Uh, my name is Lindsay Pepper, I'm in Ward Two. I'm gonna try not to cry, I mean, I can try best, or so. Fair with me. I think I didn't write anything, but I'm coming to you as a newer Concord resident. Uh, my husband and I moved here in twenty twenty, in March. We closed our house right as the pandemic hit. Um, we slated our finances for a house that we could afford. We made sure that we were going to be okay if our taxes did rise, like anybody else would expect their taxes to rise. And we had help from my parents, we put our twenty percent down on our house, uh, we got a three and a half percent. It was wonderful, it was like the greatest thing. We started growing our family, we're on our second, our second baby, we're both healthcare workers. We worked through the pandemic so that didn't hurt us because we were there working. But our taxes have gone from the high sixes into eights now, without the school, without this, um, being this Beaver Meadow being put on board. We're buried under student loans, we're buried under the increase of gas, electric, um, groceries, daycare. I will be leaving my position and my job because we can't afford daycare. We can barely afford a daycare now with one child, but I'm not going to choose daycare over a family. But I just am asking more simply to just think about if this was pre-pandemic, if the housing market didn't go up, my family wouldn't necessarily be impacted because our house was only two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars when we bought it. It is now, because of the rising cost, um, our house is slated for about four hundred and thirty-five thousand. So now our starter home is a half a million, almost half a million dollar home, and this is now impacting us. And, you know, we're a hard-working family, my husband's a nurse at Concord Hospital, you know, but we're trying, we try to do everything right. Um, we did everything by the book, we got married, we had children, we bought a house that's slated for our finance and our income. So, I think my parents would strike me down if I didn't come up and just say my piece and stand up for our, for us, um, or any families that are like us. And I just want you, when you make a decision, just know that there are people who are now in houses that will be... in houses that will be affected by this, that weren't going to be affected by this previously. And we don't know what to do anymore when a lot of this is just being pushed on us. And not that, I understand the school, we needed a school, I get that. And I understand people need recreations and things like that, but when you're slated financially and you do everything right, and you're just getting beaten down by the extra, like, the crazy costs of everything else going up, just remember that there's families like mine that aren't going to be affordable, like, we're not going to be able to afford a house eventually, because we're now probably going to be, our taxes will, after this, will probably go creeping into the eight-and-a-half thousand year. But that was the only one to say. I didn't want to take up all your time. I just wanted to know.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is the council. I'm Alex Streeter. I live in Ward Seven, and there about 15 years. I will skip over the parts that other folks have touched on. One of the things that I do want to highlight, though, is, just in broad terms, the cost of this project, $10 million for 15,000 square foot facility. Do the math, that comes out to about $670 per square foot for finished product. That's insane. Now, the folks from Turner will probably roll their eyes and call me naive, but I am an engineer. I know how to do research, and I know about facts and figures. I do a little bit of research on construction costs, current, for the time that we live in. And $670 per square foot is roughly speaking twice the cost of residential construction. It is more than the cost for commercial construction. It is, I was trying to find something that was comparable in the different listings that I came across, and one that came closest to a match was hotel, five stars. If you want to build a community center, build a community center. It doesn't require a pro shop. It doesn't require a publicly owned but privately operated restaurant. 222 parking spots. I don't live in the area. I don't know about complaints about parking or the capacity there for various events. I do know that there are schools and other facilities that would be a very short shuttle ride away if there wasn't need for overflow parking. For context, none of the schools in the district have more than 100 spots. The community center up on the heights has well under 100 spots. I don't know why we are creating more area in asphalt than we are for the actual building that we are speaking so much about tonight. Another tidbit on construction costs, rolling back the clock to when the community center up on the heights was built, that was seven-and-a-half, eight million dollars back in 2017. If you factor in the cost of inflation for construction over the last six or so years, that comes out to about $389 per square foot in today's dollars. And that's for a building that is twice as large, is used by a very broad swath of our city. Moving on to my next point here. Okay. I did say that I wasn't going to copy some of the other things that had been said, but I would like to voice my frustration about where is the fundraising from private organizations? I appreciated the testimony from Mr. Evan Brown. I contributed to the Ski the Bee program to get them their groomer. I contributed to the skate house over at White Park. I'd be happy to contribute to lights up on the heights, and so on. It seems every large community project here has some constituency that is happy and willing to do fundraising to help to free the cost because they believe it. If the Golden Community is so broad and egalitarian as its boosters would like to claim, where are they? Why haven't they stepped up to demonstrate their willingness to do their part to make this happen? We should not be bearing the full cost of this. In some of the letters to the editor, some folks have said, "Well, taxpayers pay for the library. They pay for the trails. They pay for the pools." And I don't use any of them. Give me my clubhouse. A key difference is accessibility. Anyone can walk into the library. You want to use the trails? Lace up your shoes. Nobody needs to pay a greens fee to toss a football at Rollins Park. I use the pools during the summer. Gosh, I wish that they could be open for more than the six or eight weeks that we can get staffing for them. These are amenities that are largely free and open to the public, and they're used by lots of people, and they're accessible. Nobody needs to reserve a tee time at most of these places. And whether the golfers like to admit it or not, it is still a moneyed sport. The closest analog that I could think of amongst the sports that I myself partake in is downhill skiing, right? You've got the lodge, go in for your hot chocolate, but that is also a moneyed sport. It's got a high barrier to entry, equipment, lift passes, and so forth. I'm not asking the city to own and operate a downhill ski mountain. I don't think that the city of Concord would sign up for that if it was on the table. Lastly, whether the members of this council would like to admit it or not, this particular project, this particular issue did play into my thinking for who I was voting for in this most recent election. A lot of the incoming members expressed skepticism, and I share that skepticism, in case you couldn't tell. So I appreciate the motion to recess and to take this up for vote at some other point when we have more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, well. Okay, we've been going for two and a half hours. We have things that people really need to say, so we'll on the back. Yeah. Who else still wants to testify? One, two, three, four.
Thank you for all the people before me. They'll be even shorter than they were today. But there were a couple of key things I wanted to make. My name is Terry Gladstone, and I'm from Ward Nine. I've lived in Concord around 40 years. Run for office a couple of times, done some other things around the community. But what I wanted to bring up was, and I'll be skipping around a little bit since most of this has been said, is a lot of the people on this council, running either for election this year or reelection and in the previous elections, always stand up and tell us that they're going to manage the city budget the way we would manage our household budget. Well, I have to tell you, if I go out and look for a $300,000 house because that's my budget, and then when it comes down to the final negotiations, it suddenly goes up to $600,000, I'm going to step away from that. That wasn't in the budget. Second of all, you have to look at other expenditures that you see coming down the road that may be more critical. You don't put a pool in your backyard when you need a new roof. We have, as some people have said, and I'll barely touch on it, we have an affordable housing crisis, which may contribute to possibly having to put in a fund for keeping people on staff or bringing new people in because they can't afford to live here. So thus, they can't work here. It's too much to commute. And we do have housing going in. I won't say we don't have housing coming in. Some affordable, some maybe not so affordable, but that brings up another issue. What about the fire department? I know we're looking at taking care of the police department, but with the additional infrastructure going in and growing, the fire department has gotten pretty much, from what I can see, next to nothing over the past few years, and seems to be struggling to manage what we already have. So that's another thing that's critical for you to take a look at. I, one of the things that really burned me about this was when people kept saying, "Well, we did the lighting and everything at Keach Park." Well, I did a little asking around and even talked to a couple of people at the city, and it turns out that you have 400, give or take, members at the golf course, and you have tens of thousands of people who take advantage of our parks for everything from walking the dog, snowshoeing, to soccer leagues and other league, sports leagues and that sort of thing. And we have 4,000 people alone on Fourth of July at Memorial Field, which is in greatly great need of work. And as I understand it, we already have committees looking at addressing, working on Memorial Field and working on the Riverwalk Park and that sort of thing. So I think we really need to sit down, you really need to sit down, and I'd be happy to help. I won't run for city council, but I'd be happy to help. I do better on this side, to look at what the priorities have to be. And I would say that $10 million for a golf course is not what I'm willing to pay my additional taxes for. I don't say we don't need a golf course, but we also have examples in our community of how that might be addressed. When you look at the Friends of White Park, the Friends of the Audi, and other organizations like that, and you heard one young man say they would be happy to be one of the groups that contributes to that. And we've had other things come about, our new mayor coming in, Champlin, working on the building downtown, the historical building, getting people to raise money. So I think there are other ways to look at this, even if they're only paying for a part of it. And I also felt that citizens that voted you were in were giving short shaft because you treated them like you could ram it through without them knowing what you were doing until the very last minute, and I think you need to give them more credit than that, and I think you need to respect them a little bit more. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Joel Eaton. I am a resident of Ward Four, soon to be resident of Ward Three. And I wrote down my testimony, which is good news for its brevity. I was not here in person on November 13th, but streaming the meeting online, I listened, and I was deeply affected as someone from Human Services spoke that night about the real concern that the city will run out of funds in the next few months to support the many seeking assistance for rent and other basic needs. I heard that in that meeting. Not 15 minutes later, I listened as all of you, many of you, I won't say all of you, many of you gave your arguments downplaying the spending of the $10 million towards this clubhouse. And the reasonableness of moving this to have a vote today, that was the intention. Now, I know that's changed now. You're saying it wasn't the intention to have a vote tonight, then?
I said, that meeting on the 13th, what I said was, we should have a public hearing, which we're doing.
Okay. That was not what I understood.
And I explained that we could do nothing, we could pass what is, or we could take some other subsequent action. I gave three possibilities.
Okay. I think what I understood and what so many other people understood clearly was that there was going to be a decision made tonight about a bond.
It could have been.
Okay. All right. So anyways, so that's, that was what I heard. And so juxtaposition, now I'm getting off script here, I'm taking longer, sorry about that. The juxtaposition that investment with the report of the desperation of those seeking assistance from this city, unable to pay rent, buy fuel and food, not to mention the report about the many hundreds of unhoused, that also happened in that meeting. It felt uncanny to witness on my phone, online, those two things being talked about in this room within a half an hour of each other. And it's not just the $10 million price tag, but the pursuit of the bigger, nicer, better for the few. And I know it's more than 400, we've heard that tonight, but the bigger, the nicer, the better for the few, with relatively no comment from this group and no reflection on that Human Services report of the plight of your fellow residents. Maybe that conversation happened after I could hear it. I think the city needs to reassess the priorities for its spending. It's not, it's not an either-or or zero-something thing. I don't believe that's true. I think we can have and maintain public spaces and make them as accessible to as many people as possible. And we can give housing and fuel and shelter and care for those who've been made vulnerable in hard times. We can do both these things. But we need to move toward this with care, patience, consideration, and always with the human impact made front and center. We've heard people tonight talk about the real human impact for, especially for lower-income families, for families that would easily be middle-class families, but in the current post-COVID economy are being actively squeezed out. And that's real. So I think that, could we, so human impact made front and center, could we build a more reasonably scaled public space, make it as accessible as possible to as many as possible, and not contribute to the financial burden of the public that it is being built to serve? I think we can. And I also think it's a path that requires intentionality. It requires time, and it requires as but public input more than a night or two or three, especially when new information comes to light. When the estimate came in at $10 million rather than $5 million, and it became known that it would not be built with the financial benefit of partnering with New Hampshire Golf Association, but would in fact be paid for by taxpayers, I think this was one of those moments when wisdom calls us to creatively rethink a project in light of new, challenging information that's been gathered, to reflect on a surprising setback, wow, that's different, and return to deliberation with committee and community to see whether or not our plan was the best for current city needs and for real human impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody? Appreciate it.
Hi, I'm Eric Gallagher from Ward Six. So I am here to testify against the current proposal. So I just want to start with, well, so mentioning that I'm from Ward Six, and this is out in Ward Two. When people talk about accessibility, or is it accessible or not, there's different senses to the word. Sometimes it might mean, like, is it accessible to people with disabilities, or is there a proper, that sort of sense of it. But I think the sense of the word accessibility that I'm concerned about is just getting to it in the first place. You know, it's in this remote location, out in the more rural part of Concord. If I wanted to walk to it from Ward Six, it's a really long walk. I don't think that, there are even sidewalks the whole way, especially along State Street there. And also, the bus doesn't, concrete area transit doesn't go by it. It stays on State Street, and closest place you have to get off would be at the place where there's the split with Stool's Falls Road, and that's just not convenient for, that's not an option for most people who live downtown. So it's in this remote location, and just And also, the bus doesn't, concrete area transit doesn't go by it. It stays on State Street, and closest place you have to get off would be at the place where there's the split with Stules Falls Road. And that's just not convenient for, that's not an option for most people who live downtown. So it's in this remote location, and just in terms of the land use, golf is a pretty bad use of land. The, just the monoculture of grass being the only plant growing in that area is really bad for pollinators and for biodiversity in general. There's other plants besides grass we could be growing instead, and also the fertilizers that are required to maintain it. I remember in high school, we, when we, in one of my biology classes, we'd go and measure certain levels of things in the various waterways around town. And one of the things that fertilizer runoff leads to is increase of nitrates and phosphates in the local waterways, which often leads to them getting choked with algal blooms and stuff. So, yeah, basically, golf is a, there are better things that we could be using that land for than golf. Someone said, oh, no, it might get developed. Well, that would be good if it got developed and turned into housing. That would, that would be an improvement. It could help improve the whole housing crisis that we're going through. Someone was also worried, oh, it might just fall into disrepair. Well, that also would be an improvement if it just went back to being forest, in my opinion. It would do a better job capturing carbon than the current crop of grass that's making up the golf course. So, yeah, I think there's lots of better, we could be spend, I do support the city spending money on stuff and doing things. I don't think it's necessarily the price tag that's the problem, it's the fact that it's for golf. And I think that there are lots of better public goods that would benefit the public more broadly and more generally that we could be spending this fund instead.
Thank you very much, Representative. I enjoyed reading your bills, by the way. Okay. Mr. Walker. How many do we have left? Come on, you guys can't keep raising your hand. We're at 10:32 right now.
Do you need a motion to extend it?
No, yeah. Well, thank you.
It's dangerous and not one we know.
Thank you very much. Long day. I wrote quite a bit, but at this part of the night, I can cut way back. First of all, we've had lots of exciting conversations over the years, and we've agreed and disagreed, but I want you to know I truly do appreciate your service and the sacrifices that goes into being a city councillor. And councillor Krenovic, kind words the other day were a real shock to my family. Thank you so much for recognizing me, Father.
We love her.
Thank you. So, my mother used to come to these council meetings and come home, you know, sometimes at midnight, and then wakes up in the morning, she's making breakfast for all four of us, and I'd say, Ma, how'd that hearing go last night? And she'd say, pretty good. I said, what was the vote? She says 14 to 1. I said, 1? Yeah, nobody agreed with me. I got to have my say. And she said, you know, this, I heard this a lot. This wasn't a project that I'm totally opposed to, but I'm just opposed to the way we're going about it. And that she always looked at, is everybody getting a say? Are we hearing everybody in the city? And is it the best for the city? And I think that's, that's where I'm at on this. I don't oppose this idea of making Beaver Meadow better. Certainly, the clubhouse is in poor condition. Course, I think, is in real good condition. And that's where I think lots of money should be spent, is keeping the course in good condition because that's why people play there. I don't think they played it for a great clubhouse. It has to be adequate and meet the needs of the public to a point. I'm skipping around here because I don't want to keep repeating people. I did look at, you know, the $10 million, it's really more like $11 million. It's a bizarre number, I thought, right off the bat, based on square footage cost, but I think there's better ways to improve Beaver Meadow. And, you know, the new design, it seemed to come along real fast. I don't know how much of that $1.5 million was spent on this particular floor plan. It just seems like a lot of money for what you received. And I think it can be scaled back. I'm not sure if the building can be approved with a renovation. Maybe it can, but I haven't seen those numbers. Maybe, maybe there's better information, better due diligence on that than I'm aware of. But, you know, 15,000 feet, I thought it could be scaled back by a third, and you could still accomplish what you wanted to. You know, if I was a private developer and I looked at that pro forma, I don't think I would do this. And it doesn't mean stop, but I think it's maybe go back to the drawing board a little bit and tweak some things, make it a little more cost-effective. And, you know, a private developer would have done a market study. I don't know if there was a market study for this. Do we know? No, okay. You know, that would tell you if what you want to build is going to work. You know, is there a need for three big function areas or function rooms? Maybe there is, but when you're not using them, you're paying for them, run them. Trying to cut out all kinds of things here. Oh, maintenance. So the reason it's in terrible repair is because I think we didn't pay attention to taking care of it. You know, you go in there and the bathroom is broken, if the toilet's broken, you can't just put out of order on it. You need to fix it. When the building needed paint, you should paint it. Those things, you keep up with your maintenance. This, a building of this proposal, I think needs professional management all around, not just, not just city staff, someone to run this property. If you're going to have a small event center, you need to have an event manager, someone who's going to promote it, someone who can advertise, make people aware of what you have. I don't know if that, I don't, I didn't think that's in the budget, but I'm not sure how it's actually going to operate and run. And maybe if you told us that, I'd feel a little more comfortable. The only other thing is, I won't say, you know, today's kind of unlucky day because you know what came in the mail today? Lots of tax bills for me. And I didn't bother opening them because I wanted to come here tonight and be esteemed. But, you know, affordable housing, when, sometime after the first of the year, when the new council sits, you sit and have, set your priorities, that will be at the top. I would say affordable housing, that's our goal, you know? Try to maintain some affordability there. But every time these projects come up, you know, whether it's this, the school, the police station, which, you know, if we're starting out at $25 million, it's probably going to be $40 million. Memorial Field, all those things add up, and it's reflected in the tax bill. And at the landlord, we have several mom and families. At this point, you have to pass it on to the tenant. You have to. We're going backwards now on why we, why do we own these properties? We own them for income, our retirement. So, you know, the tenant, he's the one that bears the burden of the increase in the tax rate. The water bill goes from $40 to $75 a month, just like that. No idea why, but it's like across the board. You know, so that's, that's keeping rental units affordable, not just building affordable, maintaining some affordability. And so I don't think I'm an obstructionist. I think I've spent 38 years promoting Concord and working towards progress and building taxable properties, but I think this one's a little over expensive, and we probably, we should slow it down just a little bit, take a better look at it. Is there a better way to achieve the goal of improving Beaver Meadow or Beaver Meadow Clubhouse? Thank you very much. Anybody? Appreciate it.
Short and sweet. Bob Tatum from Ward One. My apologies upfront. 30 years in the Army, I've been accused of being blunt. There's good news and bad news. Y'all have a transparency problem, and I'm sure you've heard that more than once from the audience. And that leads to, you know, some bad PR. And so just a taxpayer's perspective, okay? I'm not opposed to, I'm not opposed to upgrading the clubhouse. I am opposed to the dollar amount, and I think we've heard that a number of times. But I think there's, I think there's a way around it, and I think, you know, it's got to go back to the, back to the drawing board. And so I'm going to quote something that we all, we all have learned in the military, and that is, no plant survives first contact, okay? And that's exactly what I think's happened here, okay? This was a plan that over a period of months just blew up, literally blew up, from under $1 million to, you know, 10 times that, you know? And so I think it just needs to, it just needs revision. And I think it can be scaled back to something that's more reasonable and more palatable to the taxpayers, but I think it also needs to have some, you know, people talked about earlier, about fundraising. And I think it needs to be looked at with some fundraising plans. I also think there's some other options. And one of the things that I didn't hear, and I didn't see in the pro forma budget plan was, I didn't see any line items about income or revenue stream from the winter season, you know, from, you know, the cross-country skiing or the skating or anything like that. I didn't see any budget revenue from there. Now, you know, I noticed there was an article in the paper a while back about, I think it was Bow High School was using it for a practice, you know, for a cross-country ski team. And I'm thinking, hey, you know what? That's okay, that's great. But, you know, that's, we're taxpayers and we're paying for it. And God bless, but, you know, I'm all for kids using, you know, having, having some athletic things, but that's the Town of Bow. You know, God bless them, but if you're going to use taxpayers', you know, assets here in the city of Concord, then there should be a fee associated with that, you know? The other thing that we talked about and came up earlier in the discussions here was, you know, look, we're not, we're not, there's no fees associated with non-residents here. You know, look, I hear about people using it, that a non-resident is using it during the summer to play golf. Look, if this is such a great golf, I'm not a golfer, I'm a tom. You know, if, if, if non-residents like the golf course so much, I'm sure they'll pay an extra 50 bucks a year for, you know, for a non-membership fee. You know, it's not a lot of extra money, but why should a non-resident pay the same fee that a resident does? You know, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but that adds more revenue to, you know, this is basically, this is, this is budgeting 101 here, right? You either got to, you either got to reduce the expenses or increase the revenue. That's the only way we're going to make this work, okay? And so that's the, that's the deal. That's all I've got to say. Quick and dirty.
Thank you very much.
Questions? Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Chase. I live on Ward Two, and I just want to expand on what he's saying. I feel like it's an identity crisis, right? We're either a clubhouse or a community center. So are we spending clubhouse dollars with a clubhouse business plan that's going to actually bring revenue to the city instead of being this black hole it was from 2014 to 19? So we're only $10 now in the COVID times, and, I mean, our zones, the hardiest zones for the USDA just changed, right? Like, winter stuff isn't necessarily guaranteed in coming years. How are we even making money in the winter? Or are we a clubhouse, or are we a community center, right? So like, if we're a community center, we need to spend $11 million to make this place nicer. We change the format and have like community spaces and community events there. I spend as much time outdoors as I possibly can. It's one of the great parts about living Ward Two. I have never once thought about going to Beaver Meadow to be outside. That's not a thing. So it's an image issue, right? If it's a community center, why are we not driving that to bring people there, to be on board, get the buy-in from the community? We don't have that. So we either need to make this a profitable place and a clubhouse, or we need to embrace the community center side of it and make it for everybody. Thank you for staying so late. This is way past my bedtime.
Do you want a motion to extend it?
Yeah, four minutes.
Okay.
Okay, people, I'm going to talk fast. I'm going to say only things that haven't been said yet. First is, I think that we need to, once again, do the three-quarter vote if you're changing the capital budget after the original thing. Because if you put a placeholder that's too low, then you're making the proper adjustment to the thing. Like, for instance, if you own the golf clubhouse, it's going to be $10 million, maybe you would say, we don't want that second golf pro. We save $100 grand a year by limiting the second golf pro. That'll help us pay for the next. Secondly, you have a committee that's primarily made up of former school board members, so they don't think about cost. Well, I mean, that's a stereotype, but even the, the school board needs to be thinking about cost now. I'd like to say, let's expand the committee if you're going to get a committee to look at this to include more people, you know, some of whom, you know, may have some feeling about doing the cost. I think that, you know, you're talking about, this is an investment in downtown. I'd like to point out that the $10 and a half million or whatever it is, just for the clubhouse, is not that far a distance from the whole amount you spent for downtown, you know, fixing the whole downtown for two years. So that's a whopping sum for such a minor project. There's been letters in the paper from people in Bow saying, this is a great idea, Concord should do it. I think maybe you should write to Town of Bow. Say, we'll give you a share in this. We only want you to pay $30 for every household in Bow, and you can come up here for the rent and rate, see what the Town of Bow thinks of that. And as far as the community center, I think that we need to say, well, there are other facilities, like we had in school right there, they're supposed to make those available to the community. We have projects at the Star, we're giving them space on the heights, maybe they get a room available to the community for some reason. And lastly, I want to say one thing about the golf simulators. I don't know whether the pro can give lessons at golf simulator or like a video game or what, and maybe we should get 18 of them and pay for them by selling all the golf carts and mowers, because you won't need them if you have 18 golf simulators. Or maybe, you know, you're going to have competition because suppose Mr. Samson gets 10 golf simulators first because, you know, he's told he can't have game chance anymore. So I think we need to think about simulators, too. Anyway, I talk fast, that's it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, taking a moment to go bless the 11 o'clock, spend a rules. Who we got left?
That's for last.
Hey, everyone. Name is Maria Pisanja. I am resident of Ward Five, and I'm actually here to read someone else's testimony. But before I do that, I did want to thank the person who spoke before me mentioning the public transportation issue. There is no public transportation out to Beaver Meadow and inherently makes it inaccessible to a large portion of the population here. Anyhow, so that's all I have to say on behalf of myself. I'm going to read a statement on behalf of Charm Amico. of myself. Um, I'm going to read a statement on behalf of Charm Amico, who unfortunately had to leave early. As neighbors in our community continue to lack access to services and remain under-resourced, we must question the necessity of investing ten point three million into a golf course clubhouse renovation. We should consider allocating some of those funds to meet the needs of our most vulnerable communities. I urge our elected leaders to prioritize equitable and inclusive access to services and invest taxpayer dollars into products that adequately serve residents of Concord. Having worked closely with new American families and other marginalized groups for years, it has become evident that certain populations in Concord face numerous barriers. In order to address these issues, we must invest in providing resources and opportunities to overcome these challenges and break down barriers. I am skeptical about the equity of the golf course clubhouse project as it all, as it's already inaccessible to those facing financial and transportation risks. According to city regulations, it should be accessible to everyone. However, it is important to question how it can be accessible to under-resourced communities and those without transportation. I didn't realize she was gonna make that point. Perhaps a portion of the funds for the golf course clubhouse could be raised privately, allowing the city to invest in projects that benefit the entire community. It is unnecessary to burden taxpayers with the cost of an extravagant clubhouse that primarily benefits a select group of community members, particularly those who can afford to access it. While this project is presented as a profit maker for the city, we should also explore alternative investment opportunities and consider other uses for the ten point three million that could benefit everyone in Concord. Educational opportunities, improving accessibility, and fulfilling basic needs are community investments that are both profitable and socially valuable. We must take immediate action toward the more inclusive model. I urge our leaders to explore alternative profit funding sources for the golf course clubhouse so we can invest in a city that is equitable and inclusive for all. This is what Concord truly needs. Thank you all very much for staying so late and hearing all we have to say and all the work you do.
Appreciate you. Okay, I recognize, um, her turn. Oh, good, I'm sorry. She introduced herself as the last person. Welcome.
I'm Melissa Heimbach. I live in Ward Five, and I'm going to be extremely brief because I thank you all for your incredible patience, um, and perseverance and longevity this evening. Um, I winnowed four pages of comments down to basically two sentences. The first one is, show me your budget, and you will show me your values. And the second sentence is that I just encourage you all to truly recommit to fiscal responsibility, transparency, true diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging for all of Concord. And I would like to just thank everyone who's gone before, especially Charm Amico, who spoke in the previous, um, statement via surrogate. I think what Charm said really summed up what a lot of us feel. So thank you all for listening to us all tonight. I hope that you will recess and discuss this, research and listen thoroughly, and let the new twenty twenty-four city council vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my apologies. Anybody else? You're short. Okay. Your turn.
I do, Mr. Mayor. I move, um, to recess, uh, this hearing to, uh, this item, Beaver Meadow Clubhouse Building. So I move to recess, to the call of the chair, and also descend back, um, this, um, this item to existing committee.
Second. All the papers say aye? Aye. All opposed? It's non-debating. I will say this, I encourage you, everybody come back and testify next week. That was probably as close as two minutes as I've ever gotten.
I know.
Well, kind of like, we do that. Do something. Party. Councilor Hawkins? What's around? In the ladies room. I'm assuming without leave. Their arms is carrying through the next game or what? I'll share. I'm here after eleven to eat a second piece of cake.
I still have some remaining.
I still have a few of mine.
I've got a second piece already. Thank you, though.
The city manager was sitting over there sneaking.
There was a line in the ladies room, sir.
Okay, so let's, let's roll. All right, brings us to our public hearing action phase. Madam Clerk, I'm thirty-six, please.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of sixty-eight thousand dollars for a source development charge study and accepting sixty-eight thousand dollars in drinking water and groundwater trust fund grant.
Thank you very much. Do we have approval?
Second.
Motion made second. Approve this item. Is there any discussion? Second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed? Have received necessary two-thirds. Motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, I'm thirty-seven, please.
A resolution appropriating the sum of twenty-four thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars for law enforcement related programs and accepting that sum in an extra grant funds from the United States Department of Justice.
Approval, second. Motion made second. Approve this item. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to recuse myself from this item.
Thank you very much. So noted. All in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed? Have received necessary two-thirds. Motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, I'm thirty-eight, please.
A resolution appropriating the sum of twenty thousand two hundred dollars to assist the library's mission in providing a variety of equitable services to patrons at the Concord Public Library and appropriating that sum in grant funds from the Concord Public Library Foundation.
Second. Motion made second. Approve this item. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I am accusing myself of this item.
Thank you very much. So noted. Uh, for this conference, I'm all in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed? Have received necessary two-thirds. Motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, I'm thirty-nine, please.
It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sales agreement with a duped company, related entity to acquire real estate located at Four Putin Street and one twenty-four North State Street for the police headquarters project, appropriating the sum of four million ninety thousand dollars for the acquisition and purchase of the real estate, and authorizing the issuance and bond the notes in that sum.
Approval. Thank you very much. Motion made second. Approve this item. Let's do a roll, Council.
Your Honor, I'm accusing myself from this item.
So noted.
Mayor Bulle?
Yes.
You're serious?
I just had a question. I'm sorry. I didn't see what you were saying. My apologies. Please forgive me. We'll stop the voting and
Sure. So I just wanted to clarify one piece on this, which I know we got some testimony from people. Um, my understanding is that we will have a due diligence period in which we will evaluate whether or not we're going to have the opportunity to renovate this building or whether, uh, we would have to knock it down and start over. And we have the opportunity to get out of the closing if, if we choose, uh, choose to based on whatever our due diligence shows during that period of time.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, my apologies. We'll try it again. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Bulle?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Brown?
Reused.
Counselor Chimpson?
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy?
Yes.
Counselor Grace Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Kitch?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor Nian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Hocken?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
I've received necessary two-thirds. Motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, I'm forty, please.
It is a resolution establishing a technology infrastructure and equipment capital reserve appropriating the sum of a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents as a transfer to the technology reserve and accepting that sum from these lines for this purpose.
Approval.
Motion made second. Approve this item. Is there any discussion? Second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed? Have received necessary two-thirds. Motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, I'm forty-two, please.
It's an ordinance in any of the Code of Ordinances, Administrative Code, Chapter thirty-five, Classification and Punishment Plan for a Senior Assistant City Prosecutor.
Approval, second. Motion made second. Approve this item. Is there any discussion? Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Have received necessary two-thirds. Motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, I'm forty-two, please.
A resolution appropriating the sum of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for General Services Department retention payments and authorizing the use of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in unassigned fund balance.
Approval, second. Motion made second. Approve this item. Is there any discussion? Second, all in favor, say aye? Aye. All opposed? Have received necessary two-thirds. Motion is adopted. Uh, we have no reports, no new business. I don't believe we're taking off the unbridgeened business, correct? That's what I see. You're the one who did. Okay. Existed comments required by, um, Mayor Council. Anybody have anything they want to share? Do you want to just go around the room, or do you mind?
I'll start.
Perfect.
I just want to wish everyone happy holidays. And, uh, I just wanna thank all my colleagues around the table. It's been a pleasure to serve all of you. For those of you who will not be returning, I just wanna say, and especially to our mayor as well, that, uh, your, your contributions to the council's efforts have been invaluable, and, uh, I really very much appreciate and enjoy every moment of working with you. I know you will be gone, but you will definitely not be forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve with all of you. I have no reason to kiss up to the mayor. Elect or current, so. But it's been fun to serve with you.
Don't be so fast.
Thank you very much.
Didn't notice you.
Oh, that's true.
Did I owe the comments of Counselor Todd? Did, did I owe your comments? But I also want to say, we still have all your phone numbers of those of you that are leaving, so I'll call you and talk to you about that.
I'm just gonna echo Counselor Todd's. I, you know, it's my first term. I really appreciated, um, serving with you, looking across the table, learning from you. I'm a better counselor, a better person, uh, from this experience, and I really thank you for that.
I wanna thank first everybody who came out today, uh, to testify. I wanna thank everybody who emailed me and called me. I had a lot of very good conversations with people. Um, I hope you'll continue to be involved in the process. Obviously, this is sort of the beginning and not the end of the process. Uh, to some of the new counselors I see on the audience, welcome. I hope you get the pleasure of having one of these late meetings, uh, very early on as well. Uh, and then finally to, uh, to, uh, the members of the council that will be departing, um, I wanna start by thanking the mayor, um, who has taught me so much, um, and was a great resource and, you know, anytime I had a question about anything, you answered them. I really appreciate that. To Counselor Nian, um, who I think is a tremendous resource that will be losing just the, uh, the knowledge about all of the things and, you know, um, the, the time, I think it was probably one after, after one of my first meetings where he said, um, "That's a good thought. We did that in, uh, in, in two thousand, and it didn't work, and we, we looked at it again in two thousand and five, and we looked at it again in, in, in twenty-twelve, and, but I like where your head's at." Um, so I appreciate that, and I hope I can continue to, uh, to obtain that guidance from you. Um, and, uh, everybody else, it's been a pleasure serving with you as well. And, uh, thank you all.
Yeah, I'm really sad to, I'm really gonna miss many of you, um, who've had the pleasure of serving with over the years. I think that you've done tremendous work and have, you know, given so much of yourselves and your time, and I'm grateful for your families for allowing, um, allowing you to be able to get all this. As I see, it's a rare definition of reading in the back, and Jackson Boule, and thank you both, um, for giving of so much of Mayor Boule's time. Um, I'm going to miss him the most, I will say. You've been just a really tremendous mentor, and nobody, um, can facilitate meeting the way that you do. Nobody can facilitate, um, consensus building the way that you have. Um, you make sure that every person in the audience feels as if they've been heard, um, especially those times when I'm like, I would love to put a two-minute limit on this, but you never do. You always say, anybody else will speak for a second time. And that's just such an important lesson for all of us, is to make sure that the public has the opportunity to weigh in and to feel that they've been heard and to truly be heard. So, um, that you're gonna stay involved in many ways. But I'm gonna miss you very much deeply and all of my other fellow counselors that are departing. Thank you all.
Same thoughts, uh, as we've heard already. Uh, I, I think the one thing I'm gonna, um, probably miss the most is really the collaborative way that, uh, particularly the departing people worked on the council. Did mean we all agreed, uh, but the issues were never made personal. Uh, they were made with the city's best interests at heart. Uh, and I never felt that, uh, any of you that are leaving had a particular agenda they were trying to drive home. Uh, and I, and I hope, uh, the new folks coming in are thinking really broadly about the city. And I know everyone has their passions and their, their issues and agendas. Very important that they be heard, but I think, uh, the folks that are leaving thought of the city in a very broad context, and I think that will be missed. I, I hope it continues going forward.
Uh, I am rarely speechless, but I'm close to it right now. Um, I, I do also want to echo, uh, Counselor Fantasy and say thank you to all the people who came out. Thank you to all the people who testified. Um, I think we've had a healthy, healthy community conversation, and I'm hoping that we continue to have a healthy community conversation around this and other issues. Um, I'm deeply gonna miss the I am rarely speechless, but I'm close to it right now. I, I do also want to echo Counselor Fantasy and say thank you to all the people who came out. Thank you to all the people who testified. I think we've had a healthy, healthy community conversation. And I'm hoping that we continue to have a healthy community conversation around this and other issues. I'm deeply gonna miss the council with very few changes. You know, I've served with this group for ten years. And I think Counselor Keach hit the nail on the head when he said that this has been a collaborative body. These have been people who feel very strongly about issues, but also who have always tried to come together and to work together in the best interest of the city. I won't try to go out and name people individually, but you've all made a great contribution to the future of the city during your tenure, no matter how long it's been. Probably the person who's made the most significant impact has to be Mayor Bulle. I want to thank him for being a mentor, being a firm man of the tiller, for being, as Consigliere De Sastin said, a consensus builder, which is not an easy thing. It's with some trepidation that I take the tiller from his hand. But I feel that the wisdom that he's shared with us, the perspective that he's given us hopefully will continue as we move forward as a new council, with some of the folks around the audience and some of the folks who worked earlier tonight. I look forward to that day. But I look back with some trystess, that sweet sadness, to the council that, that is going to leave the stage tonight.
I want to thank everybody for my first year, so I'm going into my second. I want to thank you all for leaving the council this year. I miss you all. Welcome the new people coming in. And, you know, I'm gonna miss you. And I'm glad you're, you're joining us. Thank you.
I want to thank the residents of Ward Seven for allowing me the honor and privilege for serving for eighteen years. I also want to thank my family for allowing me to share my time with the residents of Concord. I look forward to watching the council in the future. Thank you all for your friendship, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
So I wanted to thank the residents of Ward Eight for believing in me and voting for me, and also my family for supporting me. And I will miss everybody here. I've learned a lot. I've grown a lot. And I've been really grateful to have met and become friends with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you all. It's been, it's been a real privilege to serve on the council. And I, and as I've worn both hats of being a state representative and a city counselor, I found the council a lot more rewarding because we're just so close to the local level. And you could really make a difference. And I want to thank you, Mayor, because as you have been a consensus builder, you've always looked at the big picture. And you've calmed me down when I get a little Irish temper going. But, and I also want to thank my family and friends who have put up with me and given me space to do this. And I want to express my gratitude to the voters who have consistently supported me and voted me in. And I also want to express my gratitude to the voters of Ward Nine, who wrote me in as supervisor of the checklist. At the polls. So thank you very much. And I wish you all well. And I miss you. And no, I will not be watching.
Before I do thank yous, I did just want to take a moment to recognize consent resolution thirty-three. I didn't want to pull it from the agenda to speak to it, but the city is moving forward with a competitive grant for a modular vehicle barrier system for protection of crowds at public gatherings. We had a chance to test drive this during Halloween. Howl. Thank you to the fire chief and staff for making that possible. It worked great. It's great to see it in action. I'm really excited that we're moving forward with that. So I wanted to draw attention to that. I would also like to thank my family for all of their support and letting me do early mornings and late nights around city council. I hope that my son one day speaks this effectively about those, those morning breakfast conversations as we heard earlier tonight. I want to thank the council members for all your support. And in particular, Counselor Ben Todd, who was one of the first folks to reach out when I got elected, has been a mentor and consistently reached out with support over the years. So thank you for that. It's really helpful when you're new and finding your way here. I'm really excited about a lot of the new ideas that we heard over the last few months. And I think the city council is in great hands. And I'm excited to see what happens. And I'll be in the gallery. So you know, I'll be watching.
Thank you, Your Honor. Appreciate your good reach. So it is now my pleasure to award our city manager his twenty-five-year milestone for the city of Concord. So this is your twenty-five.
Here in test key to the city.
For your tribute, people, he was appointed city manager on April tenth, two thousand and six. So, um, I just bear with me a little bit. It's a little long, but it comes after twenty-six years. So, uh, so as my time as mayor comes to a close after sixteen remarkable years and ten years as Ward Ten counselor, I wanted to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude and share some final remarks with all of you. First and foremost, I'd like to extend my heartfelt appreciation to all fifty-two council members who have worked tirelessly alongside me. Your dedication, passion, and commitment for our community have been truly inspiring. And together, we have accomplished so much. And I am proud of the progress we have made during our tenure. Specifically, I want to recognize, I'm gonna take your first names. I'm sorry. Earl, Keith, and Gail, and Candice, Xandra, Lou Hall, outstanding counselors. There's an alumni club that we should have. And we can all watch and enjoy. To the community, I'm humbled by your support throughout the years. Your trust in me led to lead the city has been an honor. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to have served you. It's been an incredible journey filled with challenges and triumphs. And I'm proud of the positive changes that we brought about together. During my time as mayor, we've achieved significant milestones from supporting our public safety, revitalizing downtown, expanding our tax base, protecting our open space and natural resources, fostering a sense of community. But we can be proud to say we are the capital city. But work is not done. As the torch is passed to the next council, I encourage all of you to continue to build upon the foundation we have laid. Embrace new ideas, collaborate, and strive for progress. Remember, the change takes time. And it's through the unity and perseverance that we can create a brighter future for our community. So let me personally extend a welcome to one of the most incredible institutions you can be a member of. Counselor Ed Horn, Jim Slaughter, Counselor Exicu, Counselor Joltz, and Counselor Foot is, is a great.
Counselor Ed Kurtz, too.
My apologies. I asked you if I had everybody. How we're doing? Four, two, seven, eight, nine, ten.
At large.
Yeah, a lot of people. And of course, Counselor Kurtz, the four-year term. I welcome. This is a hu, this is a wonderful institution you're gonna be part of. Enjoy every minute of it. It will be incredibly rewarding and give back as much as you give. To Mayor-elect Chaplin, I offer my supporting guides. You are stepping into a role that requires dedication and a genuine commitment to serving the community. I trust that you will lead with integrity, passion, and a deep understanding of the needs and aspirations of our residents. To our municipal employees, I want to take a little time. I want to take the moment to express my heartfelt appreciation for the steadfast commitment and dedication that each and every one of you have demonstrated throughout my twenty-six years in office. You are the backbone of our city. And without your, your hard work, our accomplishments would not have been possible. I have witnessed firsthand the tireless effort you put into your work, day in and day out. While there's ensuring a smooth operation of our public services, maintaining our infrastructure, working tirelessly to address the needs of our community, you have consistently gone above and beyond to serve our residents. Your professionalism, critiques, and commitment have made our city a better place to live, work, and thrive. You have shown remarkable creativity in finding solutions to challenges we faced. You're gonna have to be a little more creative in the future. And your dedication to the well-being of our community has been truly inspiring. I want to personally thank each and every one of you for your hard work, your passion, your loyalty. Your contributions have not gone unnoticed. And I'm immensely grateful for the positive impact you've made in our city. And I want you to know this, I'm talking about people who risk their lives in police and fire, the people who make our streets safe and make sure our kids get to school, make sure our water's clean, make sure we flush, get it seen and cared of, to make sure that we comply with all the wonderful things we have to do, to make sure our elections are unbelievably safe and fair. And to the great folks at our legal department to keep us out of trouble. I mean, the list, the list goes on, on our community development department. It's, we have an amazing group of city employees. And I would really be remiss not to, to spend time talking about how great they really are. To our city manager, Thomas Bell, I want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude for the incredible dedication, leadership, and friendship you've demonstrated throughout your tenure. You have not only served as an exemplary city manager, but you've also been a trusted confidant and friend. Under your guidance, our city has thrived and achieved remarkable milestones. Your commitment to excellence, strategic vision, and tireless efforts have transformed our city into a vibrant and prosperous community. Your ability to navigate complex challenges with grace and wisdom has been truly inspiring. Beyond your professional achievements, I want to acknowledge the profound impact you've had on my life. Your kindness, your empathy, and your genuine care for the well-being of others have touched the lives of countless individuals in our community, including mine. You've always been there to offer a listening ear, provide valuable advice, and lend a helping hand. I want to express my deepest appreciation for your friendship, your warmth, your humor, support. You've made our working relationship not only productive, but also enjoyable. And I feel privileged to have you as a friend. Tara and Jackson, I want to take a moment to express my deepest gratitude to each of you for your unwavering support, your sacrifice, and your love throughout this incredible journey. Your presence, encouragements, and understanding have been the pillars of strength that have allowed me to serve our community with a dedication and passion. Being mayor has been an extraordinary political privilege, but it has also demanded a great deal of time, energy, and commitment. And I am deeply aware of the sacrifices that each of you have made to support me in this role. From family gatherings, late nights to early mornings, you have always stood by my side, offering your support and understanding. And I don't think, I think each one of us can all speak to the exact same thing. We get home from a city council meeting, and you go, "You won't believe what happened." And they're looking at you going, "Go to sleep. Just go away." Your belief in me, even during the most challenging times, has been a constant source of inspiration. Your words of encouragement and reassurance have motivated me to keep pushing forward, even when the weight and responsibility felt overwhelming. Your love and your understanding have provided a safe haven for which I could recharge, find solace, and became strength. I am truly grateful for the countless sacrifices you have made. Your patience and flexibility during times which my duties may require my presence elsewhere have not gone unnoticed. I appreciate your understanding when family plans have to be rearranged and postponed. I think we can all understand this part. Moreover, I want to acknowledge the sacrifices you've made in terms of privacy and personal space. Being in the public eye can be challenging. I know that has affected each of you in different ways. Your ability to handle the scrutiny, the criticism, and intrusion with the grace and resilience has astounded me and made me immensely proud. While my time as mayor is coming to an end, our journey as a family continues. And I'm grateful for the lessons we've learned together and memories we have created. Your love and support have been a bedrock upon which I have built my success. And for that, I am eternally grateful. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for standing by me, believing in me, and making sacrifices to me to serve our community as mayor. You've been my source of strength and inspiration. And I am incredibly blessed to have you as my family. Love you both. In closing, I'm filled with a sense of pride and gratitude reflected on past twenty-six years. It's been an honor to serve you as your mayor. And I am confident our community will continue to thrive in our new mayor, with our new mayor and council. Together, let's embrace the future with optimism and continue to make our city a place we're all proud to call home. Thank you. Be kind to one another. Take care of one another. And may our community flourish for generations to come. Love you all. Mr. Speaker, you have anything?
You can't follow that.
That's why I'm moving this time. Counsel Nine, you have anything? Motion adjourned. Second, my Counselor Tucker, Counselor Bouchard, Counselor Spears.
Counselor Matt.
Counselor Matt, sorry.
Counselor Matt.
Everybody else. So with that, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second. Thank you so much.